And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, March 6th. All selectmen are present. First, we have a discussion of the town meeting warrant articles. Counsel, we'd love to start with you, if we may, for the zoning bylaw and the bylaw and a motion to reconsider. Sir, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, the articles are Article 32, and Article 32, in effect, would be striking the inter-agency appeal process between the Planning Board decision-making on site plan review and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the reason for that is that, first off, and most importantly, it was questioned by a land court judge on a pending appeal as to being a rather unusual approach as opposed to direct judicial review of a decision. And quite frankly, this inter-agency review process, at least in our opinion, from what we've observed, just doesn't work. And part of the reason is because site plan review is a very comprehensive zoning process, and the Planning Board is the best qualified to deal with that. A Zoning Board of Appeals, with all due respect to the Zoning Board of Appeals, does not normally get delved into the issues of a site plan and all of the components of a site plan, and they've said that. And I'm not sure that most of the members feel very comfortable in having that inter-agency appeal of a similar regulatory board. So in lieu of that, this will compel an applicant with the understanding that they would now go through or have to go through judicial review, not inter-agency review, to work out the issues with the Planning Board in lieu of having to go to court. So I think that this process would work a lot better, and it would probably save a lot of issues where people think that if they're not happy with the Planning Board's decision or conditions under site plan review, we'll just send it off to the ZBA and have another review process at no great cost, instead of having to defend their appeal, their challenge in the courts of the Commonwealth. So that's the purpose of that.
And Counsel, what was the impetus for it? And who did it come from? I know the Board of Selectmen is sponsoring it, but, you know, what was the impetus for this?
For this particular article or the original bylaw that gave this inter-agency appeal?
This particular warrant article?
This is my recommendation as counsel.
And was it in coordination with members of the Planning Board or ZBA or neither?
It's supported by the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we are going to the, both the Chairman of the ZBA and myself are going to go speak at the public hearing of the Planning Board next Monday. And I have kept the Chairman of the Planning Board apprised of this entire process. I'm not going to speak for the Chairman, but we're doing this because we think that this is in the best interest of the two town boards, as I have just stated.
And the bylaws presently constituted has been in effect for how long?
Well, several years. And it was well-intended by a prior town planner, but we've learned in the two instances, one got settled between a neighborhood and a challenger in the context of the zoning board, but the other one was a major project, which we all know about. It was Park Central, and that's now the subject of a fourth appeal, this one to land court. And it all related to the denial by the Planning Board of site plan approval. So, but initially, it went to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which made a decision on it basically creating a remand process, which they would have the right to do, but it was a wasted step. If it had been, if it had gone directly from the Planning Board decision to land court, I think that the Planning Board would have been more comfortable, that their decision would have been not in any way changed or modified, and they would stand on what they decided. And I think that would have been the better approach.
Would you foresee that this is going to be more costly to residents or to members of the development community who now have to go to court and hire lawyers and pay fees and court costs, et cetera, to...
If common sense and good judgment prevail and cooler heads prevail, I would say it doesn't need to be that way. If an applicant, whether it's a developer or otherwise, is willing to work with the Planning Board to modify a site plan, then there's no need to go to the courts of the Commonwealth. It can be settled right in that administrative process.
Are there avenues of redress? Would this be the only avenue of redress? For instance, if an appeal was going to be made and, you know, someone needed or was looking for something timely? I mean, if they went to, if planning went to the ZBA or member went, you know, the aggrieved party went to the ZBA, and there was a meeting coming up in two weeks, and they were able to get it on the agenda, they could have it heard in two weeks as opposed to going to court and maybe having it take a year?
But at the same time, if they weren't satisfied with that inter-agency appeal, then it's just created a waste of time, and they still have to go to court.
But now they'll have to go to court for everything, correct?
Correct. Well, they'd be appealing the ultimate decision of the zoning board. Currently, they appeal the ultimate decision of the zoning board, whether or not they uphold the Planning Board's decision or modify it or attempt to remand it. And the most recent one was an effort to remand once certain plans were created.
And just two more questions. Sorry, board members, I was, had a few things to ask. So, what do, how many of these appeals do we, are seen in any given year? Do you have any idea?
There's only been two under the current status of the bylaw.
Okay.
That I know of.
And do you know what other towns in our area do?
There is no inter-agency appeal, and that was pointed out to me in a revelation before Judge Shire in Land Court, who was the former Lady Chief Judge of the Land Court, and her point was well-taken that this is very unusual. Most towns don't have this process.
Okay. So in your opinion, this is, would be consistent with the practices in all other communities in the area and would be consistent with what you think is the most current practice, you know, suggested by courts of the Commonwealth, et cetera?
That is correct.
Other questions for Counsel Ms. Fannin?
Attorney Sabrano, if an applicant goes before the Planning Board and their application is denied or not supported, and you're suggesting mediation between the applicant and the Planning Board could continue, but after a denial or after...
No, during the process. During the, you know, site plan review...
You're right.
Is not defined under the zoning law, Chapter 48. Site plan review is recognized under case law as a component, normally about special permits, but it's designing the site. It's all the issues of access, screening, buffering, lighting, that normally, in 99% of the cases, if cooler heads prevail with the applicant or the developer, can be accomplished in the context of the meetings with the Planning Board. The only time a Planning Board would be compelled to absolutely deny a site plan review is if the plan is untenable. It's got to be so poor or so contrary to the intent of the bylaw that the Planning Board would have no choice but to deny it, and if the applicant declined to adjust the conditions or the design of the site via the plans that the Planning Board may ask, then you would have that situation.
So if the applicant receives a denial because they can't adjust their thinking on both sides or whatever, is there a period of time before the applicant can come back under that circumstance before the Planning Board?
Well, first of all, it's got to be decided by the court as to whether or not the Planning Board acted correctly. There is a component in judicial review, which is what are the issues that the Planning Board had? And then counsel would explain the issues. Then the court would, in most cases invariably, say, is this something that the parties are willing to work out or revisit? And then now you're starting to get a judicial commentary. You know, it's the suggestion of this court that the developer and the Planning Board work this out, if you can. And then you try that. And that's almost like the equivalent of like semi-mediation or, you know, dispute resolution. If it doesn't work, it gets adjudicated.
All right. Instead of going to court, I could refile? Or is the clock already ticking that that's my only step?
Yeah, you know, you would have to, you would have to defend an appeal right or you would lose it, and then the decision of the Planning Board would stand.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Schiffern?
Was it in your time that this bylaw was put on initially? Do you recall why that was done? And do you remember, like, your advice at the time? I mean, was it that, like, nobody else does this? Like, why are you doing it?
Well, every, you know, I remember the planner that did it, and she was a very qualified, competent planner. I don't remember the specific reason, but at the time, I think it was convincing to everybody, including the town meeting, that this occur. But what you learn about, you know, it's not a question of just because other towns do or don't do it. The real question was, and South Row tends to be very innovative in their zoning, going back to the 1990s and preservation of open space, it's all a question of, does this work? Does this bylaw provision work or is it going in the wrong direction? And it would appear that it's in the wrong direction.
Is there any benefit to giving the applicant the option of appealing to the zoning board or going straight to judicial appeal? Or is that even more odd?
I would say that it would be a strategy of certain applicants to not want to go to court to defend or challenge the action of the Planning Board. They'd rather try to do it collaterally with another town board. And again, it's really a question of, if the Planning Board has acted correctly, then nobody should fear going in for judicial review. And if you, you know, want a decision, fine, but if you're not satisfied, then you're going to force or prove the point that the Planning Board was wrong, not to a collateral regulatory board, but to the courts of the Commonwealth, which are, which can be a much tougher stand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I follow up? So is that a possibility, Mr. Schiffern's idea of, hey, you have the option of, I guess they have that now, but you're basically taking, we would be, the town, if they voted to approve this, would be taking away the option of appealing to the ZBA, and your only option would be to go to court?
That's true.
Right now, I guess they have both options?
No.
No.
Well, they do. No, I'm sorry. They would, but they would have to go through the last exhaustive administrative review of the zoning board before they could reach the court.
But, okay, so if they went, so if they had both options on the table, could they at any time decide to go to court, say they didn't want to exhaust whatever that last option was of appeal?
No, no. Based upon the design of the bylaw, you would have to complete an internal review by the zoning board of the action of the Planning Board before you could reach the courts of the Commonwealth.
I just didn't, I was trying to see if there was a way that, for, to expedite, if need be, if someone was looking for something much more expeditious and much more cost-effective than having to go to court, if they had that option reserved.
See, the biggest problem is that, respectful to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they've said this, they're just not necessarily equipped to delve into the detail of site plans. That is the expertise of a Planning Board.
Okay.
And has been for years in all the towns and in South Row. Zoning Board of Appeals is reviewing the dimensional requirements or the need for a special permit or for a dimensional-type variance, not, and the limited type of plans that you would create for that, not going into drainage calculations and all of the different aspects of having engineers come in and make representations to the zoning board after the Planning Board. It just doesn't seem to fit that the Planning Board should be second-guessed by a similar regulatory board in the town. If somebody is serious about challenging the Planning Board, let them go to the courts of the Commonwealth.
All right. Other questions? Ms. Brock, you.
Thank you. More of a process question. So by changing the bylaw on this, I just want to be clear, and so I understand that we're not changing the process of 48 that allows whoever appeals to either go to land court or Superior Court. I mean...
That is correct.
That is, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not only making it so. By changing this, again, I don't know the ramifications down the line, so I just want to make sure that the opportunity is still there for whomever appeals, that they could go to land court and/or, not and/or, but Superior Court.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Shea?
Just one quick one. So this would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting?
Yes, it's a zoning article.
Because it's a zoning bylaw change?
Amendment, that's correct.
And is this also subject to AG review?
Absolutely.
Or it is as well?
It is.
Thank you.
All right. Any final questions for counsel? All right, seeing that we have Chairman Peters and many members of advisory here, sir, any questions for you or members of your committee at this time for counsel? Mr. Stivers?
Yeah, I guess I generally think this is a bad idea. I've been on the zoning board and seen this process work. I have a question for town council. I thought I just heard you say that the first step appeal has to go to the zoning board here.
That's correct.
The language says "may," which to me doesn't mean "have to."
Not necessarily. In order to get to, that's an issue of exhaustion of administrative remedies, and the normal procedure is to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I understand what you're saying about mandatory and discretionary, but that would not apply in this particular case.
I guess my main point is, I've heard it, heard discussions with the Planning Board recently about this, and it seems to me that this is a useful avenue of appeal for the average citizen here, in that, in fact, there are instances where if somebody is aggrieved by a decision of a lot of boards, and having an opportunity to resolve that potentially locally and avoid having to hire an attorney and generate a substantial amount of additional expense seems to me to be a very useful option, at least for people who want to take another shot at a decision that they're not satisfied with. And again, I would argue that going to the zoning board is a reasonable thing. I mean, frankly, I have seen some of the courts work on this stuff, and I think our zoning board is reasonably well-qualified to deal with these issues, despite some of the comments I've heard about zoning board's qualifications, and maybe more so than some of the judges who might rule on this thing. And from a timing standpoint, again, I think you can get a lot faster decision locally on this than if you go to court, and I don't like the idea, again, of forcing people basically to hire an attorney and paying a fair amount of money to have another review here. So it seems to me this is sort of anti-local review and opportunity for individual citizens to get redress on something that they're not happy with and a reasonable amount of time for a reasonable amount of cost. So I'm strongly opposed to this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, any other comments from members of your, sir, welcome.
Adrian Peters, Chair, Advisory. Mr. Chairman, no. I think we will review it. We will vote on it on Thursday night. And what I did, what is right is like Sam, Mrs. Stivers did, is if anybody here, because from our point of view, if any one of the members wants to make a comment or ask questions, they're welcome to. And so from that point of view, it's an open meeting on our side. I will not speak for everybody.
All right.
But we will vote on Thursday night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask another question of town council? So initially, just so I understand as well, you said this has only been used since this bylaw was in place twice?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay. So it's not something that's typically used by either side through the history of this bylaw, basically? That this is, it's a rarity to some degree to be used in this respect to appeal a Planning Board site plan to ZBA?
That's absolutely true, and the ultimate reason for that is that the Planning Board spends an inordinate amount of time going through the details of the plans, and from my experience, there's really no basis for any form of a challenge or appeal because they come out in most cases, if the applicant and the applicant's representatives are reasonable, with a bona fide decision. It's when there's pushback or challenge or refusal to grant or give the necessary detail that a Planning Board wants or needs that creates an issue. And that was the principal issues that developed in the one substantive case, which is now pending in land court.
Okay.
An inability or refusal to give the Planning Board the detail they wanted or needed.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know if members are, want to vote on this one tonight. I know that, I guess, planning is having their hearing on Thursday, so we, you know, really haven't heard from them on this one. Do we want to hold? Is there, what do folks think? Mr. Schiffern, what do you think?
I'd prefer to hold and hear what they have to say. I mean, I'm compelled by what town council is saying, but I'm also, I guess, reluctant to take away a level of appeal to the people within town. So, I mean, part of me feels like if something is, happens to be beyond the zoning board, you know, they can say so and deal with it like that. And I think if it somehow was worded that the applicant could just skip the zoning process and go to a judicial appeal if they wanted, you know, then they wouldn't be wasting that time that we referenced in town if they didn't want to waste that time. So I just would prefer some more time to think about it.
All right. Other thoughts?
I agree.
All right. So we're going to hold on this one. Good arguments on our other side on this one. It'll be interesting to hear more. Counselor, then let's go to the next one, the motion to reconsider.
The language change in Article 32 for the general bylaws, Section 4118, is a result of several things, and one is the town clerk recognizing or notifying or noticing that we don't have a bylaw that defines that process. And historically for the town, it's been utilized because it's past practice or because it's in-town meeting time as a theory. But in consultation with a former town moderator, John Wilson, he agreed that it needed to be clarified once and for all. So this particular bylaw provision, which tightens up the process and makes clear and clarifies the process, is something that both he and myself are proposing, to have it once and for all defined in the bylaw. Mr. Wilson's not here tonight. He's in California, but he will be available at town meeting.
Okay. So if I understand this one correctly, it, so it just puts into, into language what a motion to reconsider would be, in that it would still, it would require a two-thirds vote, it'd be done by someone on the prevailing side, and that was always an area of interest at many town meetings, and at least one new warrant article must be considered following disposition. So it still could be, though, and I know this is one of the things that I've heard many people upset about, someone could wait until the very last article of the last night of town meeting, possibly when only a handful of people are left, and move to reconsider something that was, for instance, widely approved, maybe the night before, and as one of the first articles. That can still happen.
It can still happen, but it gives more definition, and the reconsideration can only occur once, and Mr. Wilson's suggestion was the last paragraph, which is, at least one new warrant article must be considered following the disposition of the warrant article brought forth unless it's the last warrant article of the town meeting.
Why have a motion to reconsider at all?
Standard acceptable parliamentary process for all parties. I mean, some towns don't do it, there's no question, but that, it's in the history of South Row's process. People expect that, but it's never been clarified. It's never been detailed. It's just something that we do or historically has been done, but without definition in the bylaw. Even if this bylaw provision, as it goes forward to the town meeting, creates more discussion, and maybe an amendment, I don't know, but something that gets it before the voters so that there's something of clear definition in the general bylaws relative to this, and the town meeting as the legislative body will make the decision. If they say, let's amend this language a little, let's tweak it, let's leave it the way it is, or let's just strike this whole theory of reconsideration, then they can do that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I have honestly heard that a lot about striking it in its entire, why even have it? You know, or if it's two-thirds, why is it two-thirds? Why not, you know, four-fifths?
Well, two-thirds is in, that's the normal parliamentary process. But if this thing is, if this thing goes up and is accepted or modified, that's one thing. If it's defeated, then that would be interpreted to mean that this town doesn't want to deal with two-third reconsiderations.
Well, if it's defeated, if this article is defeated, we go back to what the norm, standard practice has been, correct?
Well, here's the issue there. You're now going to have evidence of legislative intent that they don't want that at all. So you either leave that as a final decision of the legislative body, or you come back and put in something in your bylaw that negatively indicates that motions for reconsideration will not be granted.
I've also heard the argument made of, motion to reconsider is really a matter of trickery. And, you know, again, why have that in there if that's really what it's for, is to, someone senses, all right, the proponents of that article have left the room, and let's, let's go ahead and utilize this parliamentary measure to just negate what they all came in and voted for.
If you, if you look at the entire process of parliamentary procedure, back to the, to the courts of the Great Britain and England, you will find that the very roots of the entire process are flush with intended political trickery. And they found their way over to the United States through Roberts rules, Cushing's rules, and other rules. But in any event, that's, that's the thought of how to clarify this for the town meeting's consideration.
And did this come, did you have discussions with the current town moderator, or you had discussions with the former?
No, I have not. We have not. We're going to meet on this shortly.
Okay. All right. Questions for counsel before we move to the town moderator? Mr. Shea?
So I would just say, inevitably, this results in a 10 to 15-minute delay at every single town meeting, this whole issue, and I think if we can do something to clarify and put that to bed once and for all to speed up the play of game, if you will, at town meeting, I think it's good. I guess one question I have, the first paragraph, last sentence, any such vote on a warrant article may be reconsidered and defeated only once. Why are the words "and defeated" in there?
With the thought that if it's, that it cannot be brought back a second time for a reconsideration, that it's clear that it's a, it's a one-shot parliamentary procedure.
So should that been, it could only be reconsidered only once? So, I mean, it's possible someone would, the article could be reconsidered and it could pass as opposed to being defeated, you know? And traditionally, it's used as a ploy to, you know, defeat it so it locks in a vote. But I'm just curious why the words "and defeated" made its way in.
That was the thought. That was the intent. But, I mean, these are the kind of questions, you know, unless you propose something that tries to cure an issue for the town at a town meeting or in a zoning bylaw, unless you get it before the legislative body, it just sits there and continues to create an issue. So the theory of these is, my belief is, they're, they're in proper form, but ultimately, the legislative body's going to make the decision. And if they like it, they'll accept it, and if they don't, they'll, they may modify it or they'll give their statement that we don't want this, once and for all. It's been decided. That's the whole, otherwise, the issues just continue on, year after year, appeal after appeal. That's the theory of why we do this, is get it before the town meeting, see what the legislative body says.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Schiffern?
Yeah, I almost feel like there should be a preceding article that does a... Yeah, I almost feel like there should be a preceding article that does away with the motion to reconsider, if that's what people may want to do. I guess I don't see how just not voting for this really changes anything that we have currently happening. Where I think if we had a clear article that said this section would be removed and replaced with language that says we have no motion to reconsider, I think that would be clear and would streamline everything if that's what people really wanted. I always looked at a motion to reconsider not like trickery, but if someone that voted for something, you know, discovered new information, or had a change of heart because of discovered new facts, they had an avenue to bring that up. But if we really, I mean, I understand that 99% of the time, it's used differently, but if we felt that that wasn't necessary, then I think something clear that says we don't do it would make more sense. And then if that article failed, we could go on to this one that, you know, further explains it, or explains it better.
I don't disagree. I mean, this is attempting to get input, but it's attempting to get the issue forward.
So, I've heard the exact same argument that Mr. Schiffern is talking about, that there's, I've never heard of an instance where someone said, whoops, if only I knew X, I would have voted in the other way. And wow, I wish we had a, you know, a rule, you know, that would allow this motion to be reconsidered. It's only been done to lock in a vote because there is that fear that, of the trickery, which I do believe is the 99-plus percent of the time, when it, you know, why it's used. The other avenue, that if someone didn't get what they wanted on a particular article, and they, there's new evidence that, to them, came to light, or a new argument, is the next town meeting, to bring up their own warrant article. Other questions?
Can this be amended on the town meeting floor?
Yes.
So, we could achieve what Mr. Schiffern is stating, by striking all of this and amending it?
Or couldn't we offer up an amendment that removes the possibility of a motion
It probably would be within the four corners of the article, but it probably is a better practice that if you want to amend this article, or create its own independent article before this article, it's probably the better practice. Problem is, you're running out, you're almost out of time on that. I would, I would conclude that it's within the four corners of the article to do that, but if you feel more comfortable, then you would have an affirmative article separately that would address that, and maybe you wouldn't even get to this article. I don't know.
Or, or just changing this article to solely be one where a motion to reconsider is not part of town meeting protocol.
Then that is obviously another option available.
And do we have time if we want, if this board wanted to do that? Mr. Purple, do we still have time for that, or no?
So, the articles, as presented, are pretty much in final form. Council's reviewed everything, and to go and create another article now, we're hoping to have this posted and on the street, so to speak, at least on the website, by the end of this week.
Or if, but if we wanted to, if we asked council to work on language that struck this, and instead inserted language where there is no motion to reconsider as part of town meeting? You know, if that sentiment, Mr. Schiffern has stated it, I'm of a very similar mind right now, but I'd love to hear from others, is...
You, if this board votes that, you'll have that article tomorrow.
Okay. Other thoughts for counsel?
I support that.
All right. Ms. Brockio, Mr. Shea, Ms. Brockio?
I would like to consider this. I don't necessarily support this tonight. I'd like to give it some more thought. I'm always cautious when we're taking away the rights of the citizens, whether 99% of it is used for trickery, there's still that 1% that concerns me, that we would be taking away the right to vote in some way. So, I would certainly like to consider this more. I'm not in support of going forward with this tonight, until, I'd like to hold this and honestly give it more thought, because if we, if we had to take a position on it tonight, I wouldn't be in support of it.
Okay. And I, they definitely have the right to vote on whatever article's there, it just wouldn't be a right to revote at some time well after that, but, yeah.
Right. No, and I understand that, but it's just, again, taking away the right to do something. We just kind of had this discussion with the, the planning board and ZBA, taking away the right of someone to do something. So, I just, we held that for consideration, and I'd kind of like to do the same on this. But again, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Other thoughts?
Clarification. I'm not supporting this evening, this article, but I think the other option should be available for town meeting. That's what I was getting at. Because this could be amended on town meeting floor.
Yes.
And I think it'd be best if it comes from this board.
Right. It's a harder process to amend, I think.
It just causes a lot of confusion. At least there's two options.
Thoughts?
I mean, I would be in support of the voters at town meeting making that decision. Yes, I would.
This, this article could be amended to eliminate the option. Is, the way that the article is presently constituted, it could be amended, like what Mrs. Faniff is saying, at town meeting, to just eliminate the option altogether as well, right?
Correct. Yes. What I'm saying is that I conclude that that amendment would be within the four corners of the article. That is an option, as opposed to recreating the warrant article on the signed warrant for the posting and consideration.
Okay. Any other thoughts before we move to Mr. Moderator? Nope. Mr. Moderator, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few quick thoughts. One, I agree with Mr. Shea with regard to the words "and defeated." I had the same question about whether that might be confusing. Another way I think this may be confusing is that we have to have a two-thirds vote to reconsider, and then if, if we'd get that two-thirds, then we have to have the actual second vote on the substance of the article. And I think we need to make clear that that last sentence, "any such vote," refers to that second vote. As to whether a motion to, rather, an amendment to reverse the intent here and to just preclude, preclude reconsideration, is within the four corners of the article. I tend to take your advice, counsel. I do think, ultimately, that is my call at town meeting. Finally, I, you know, I trust town meeting voters, so to the extent they'd be voting to take away certain options from themselves, I don't think you should let that hold you up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Peters, anything from you, or members of, or Mr. Hegarty? Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Because I'm the one that kicked over the hornet's nest on here. I'm sorry to be taking so much of your time. I'd just like to read something and just clarify something here. How all this came to be is I stumbled across what the town bylaw actually says. And the town bylaw says, for reconsideration of articles, it's very simple, just 15 words, I think it's 15. "Any action taken at any town meeting shall be reconsidered only by a two-thirds vote." That's it. That's the bylaw. So, if we take a step back, the bylaws were voted by town voters, and this was voted 20-some, 25-plus years ago. So, for whatever reason, the people at that town meeting decided that's the way they wanted to run their town meeting. Somehow, it morphed to the practice that we have today. Nobody recalls why and how it morphed. But let me just take a step back and explain, decisions at town meeting are a lot more complicated than just what the bylaw says. It's a combination of, it's like a, like a, like a soup. It's a combination of what the bylaw says, it's a combination of town meeting time, and then it's the moderator's discretion. All three of those things kind of weave together. So, somehow, we ended up with the practice where you had to be on the prevailing side, something had to change, and there you go. So, my thought was, whatever we want to do, vote it, but we should, we should follow the rules. Whatever the rules are, we should follow the rules. So, that's how it came to be. I don't have a dog in the fight as to one or the other, but I do have a different perspective than Mr. Kalenda. In my experience at town meetings, that I actually have seen only one occasion where a motion to reconsider passed, and that was when Roger Challen brought a motion. It had to do with the Quinn bill for the police department. And he brought it up on the second night. The first night, the voters voted not to include the Quinn bill as part of the budget for the police department. And the second night, Roger Challen made a motion to reconsider, and the hall changed their vote to include the Quinn in the, in the bill. Pardon me. So, it was effective. It's been my experience that the use of the practice at town meeting, prevailing side, warrant article pass, is almost like the little kid's game of Boarded, you know? It's to ensure that nobody else, once you, if you're supporter of a vote, once it passes, you do this right away so that you're done for the night, and nobody can change the practice, which to me is kind of, it's kind of silly. So, it seems to me we have a spectrum of things we want to do. On the one hand, we say, we can say, look, a majority of the people voted, that's the democratic process, we're done. We voted, we move on. If you want to address this, we do it at the next town meeting. The other extreme is, you could raise it as many times as you want. There's a middle ground. And I just want to throw an option at you. And I just stumbled across this, there is a practice in some other towns in a bylaw, I think we would all agree, I would hope, that if something significant came up after vote was taken, we would want to have an opportunity to address that. So, the question becomes, what's the vehicle to do that? What's the mechanism to do that, to allow something significant to be addressed, yet at the same time not allow this into just, you know, endless, whatever the deal is? There are towns that have a bylaw for most reconsider, that give that discretion to the moderator, that say if significant facts are brought to the moderator, the moderator could make a decision to allow the motion to be reconsidered. That, to me, would be a middle ground, if that's what you chose to do. I'm not advocating one or the other, I just wanted to give people just a kind of a 10,000-foot view as to how we came to be here today, and I thought this would have been a less simpler. I'm sorry this has taken so much of your time, and I'm going to go sit down. Thank you.
Mr. Peters, anything from you or the members of advisory?
I'm first going to give, give opportunity to the members, if they will, they have any questions.
All right, seeing none? Sir?
We will deliberate on Thursday night, and we'll have a vote.
Thank you, sir. All right. What's the mood of the board? A lot of options thrown out tonight on, on this particular one? I, you know, I see it much more as that, I've only heard it in the trickery option, I have not heard it in the, in, you know, with reference to the Quinn bill. Okay, that, maybe there are significant matters that could come up from time to time, and, and it can't wait for a special town meeting, it has to be done that night. I don't know. It still seems to me like the rare event, it seems to me like the vote is taken, that is the democratic process, and your next opportunity is the next town meeting, or special town meeting. But I've heard from many, in particular, when we had Main Street and we had the Public Safety Project, there were people who said, well, wait a minute, I, I have to come back a second night? No, I finished what I wanted, was interested in, on night one, with the first handful of articles. Do we need 700, 800, 900 people coming back the second night for things that they weren't necessarily coming back for, because they don't know what's going to happen? The trickery could occur, and then their vote is gone. So, I see that as, as much more likely than that one issue where some significant material fact came up that nobody thought about or knew about, and suddenly it appeared, but...
Did we decide that we cannot add an article now?
No, we can, if we want to give counsel direction to either draft another article in very short order, we could do that. We could have a couple of options. We could have a third option, that Mr. Hegarty was talking about, that added language, you know, about a significant event that may have, or facts that may have come to the moderator, and give town members three options? I don't know. What if...
I think the quickest way to handle it is to have the preceding article that does away with it, and then if that passes on town floor, you skip 33. If it fails, then you can go to 33, and people can amend it as they wish on town floor.
I agree with that.
If they want an option like the town clerk gave, then we could do that then.
Right. I would agree.
But it saves a bunch of time if the floor doesn't even want it then.
Other thoughts? I like that idea, myself. I mean, we're not voting on it tonight either, anyway, so we could give counsel that opportunity.
Input of town meeting.
Okay. All right. So, we'll ask counsel to at least draft a preceding article that strikes the, that option? And if the will of town meeting is, yeah, we don't want it because we think it's more trickery than not, okay, if, if they like it, then, then we move, they defeat that, and we go on to the next one.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just asked counsel's advice on this. So, since you have closed the warrant, if you do want to add another article to be located, just preceding this article for that option, you need to open, open the warrant, add the article, and then close the warrant again?
So, I will make a, Mr. Shea? I will make a motion for this limited purpose, to reopen the warrant, to add, to ask counsel to prepare a warrant article, as we stated, striking that option of motion to reconsider, and then close the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So, yeah, so, the warrant will then be closed again when?
Now.
Now.
Now?
Yes.
We can do that without having the warrant of the article in hand?
You're opening, correct, you're opening the warrant, and you're closing the warrant to, with the addition of an article that is going to strike from the bylaw the ability to reconsider an article.
And you're asking me to put it into proper legal form?
Yes.
And that's, that's how you can do it?
Thoughts?
None.
None. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
One, two. All right. Three to two. Counselor, if you would, please. Thank you. Okay. The motion passes, warrant is again closed.
So, you're not, okay, so you're not taking a position on...
I'm not taking a position on...
Either of the...
Either of them yet.
Okay.
All right. Sir? Counsel, any other articles you would have an opinion on that, or you want to be, are you done for the night?
Well, I'm done for the night unless you have any other questions in the warrant.
Any of the CPA articles?
Well, I can tell you that I reviewed all, and I've approved them with, with form amendments throughout, and there was, passed around several versions of the Halloran property article.
Yes.
And we were given a further iteration of that article, which we reviewed in the last day and a half, and in conjunction with bond counsel, what is now before you is in proper legal form from our standpoint, and from the bond counsel's standpoint.
Good idea. Okay.
What you have in there, I mean, it's in proper form from a conveyancing standpoint, from a, from a form standpoint. It incorporates portions of what was recommended by the open space, not the open space, the committee, the community preservation committee, to the extent of what is the ability to obtain gifts or grants. But some of the language had to be modified because it was not relevant to the conveyancing information that we had. We've already done a full title on the property by a title examiner, conveyancing attorney, and we changed that to make it consistent with what we know relative to that. And I should also tell you in public session that I had occasion to speak at length with counsel for Halloran, attorney Sowidra, and of Mr. Peterson's office, and we are coordinating the creation of whatever legal documents are necessary on behalf of the seller to have this progress in an expedited fashion, once you act and once town meeting acts. So, everything is totally under control and ready to go.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. And anything, do you have anything on the deed of conveyance of Zero Kimberly Lane for us? If you have anything on that.
No, I think, I think Mr. Ballantyne... No, I think, I think Mr. Ballantyne can, can provide you that when we...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's the tax, that's the deed in lieu of tax foreclosure?
Correct.
I can tell you that we gave an opinion, I don't know, several months ago, and we found the title, in, in order to accept a deed in lieu of tax foreclosure, the title has to be clean and clear, except for the instrument of taking for tax, taxes purposes. At the time that we did the title several months ago, the title was clear, so the condition precedent for town meeting to consider this has been met.
All right.
So that's in proper legal form too, to carry forward, to decide whether or not we would accept that by deed in lieu of having to go through a rather tedious tax foreclosure process in Land Court.
Good news.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, counselor.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
So, it was almost a good hour, we're on pace for a good five-hour meeting? All right, so SAP proposed changes to the FY19 Personnel Bylaw. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Betsy Rosalume, I'm here on behalf of the Personnel Board, and I'm joined this evening by Jay Dietz, our newest member to the Personnel Board. And the board's advisory and board of selectmen, you should have in front of you a document that's called Presentation to Board of Selectmen and Advisory. So you don't have to take notes, because everything I'm gonna say is in the document. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to walk this through in three parts. One, I'd like to give you a little of the context of the proposed revisions, then summarize the substantive revisions themselves, and then hold for questions with your permission. You should have two versions of the warrant, one is, uh, sorry, two versions of the Personnel Bylaw, one is the warrant version with the changes in bold, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
And a track changes version, which will be a handout, not in the warrant, that shows all the changes. And that's in response to selectmen's request and last year. Personnel Board has also created two handouts for town meeting. One is a detailed summary of the changes, and the boards have that, it still says draft on it. And a Cliff Notes version, which will be a one-to-two-page summary for people who want to know what was changed, but don't want to read eight or nine pages. So, just a little bit of, we felt it was important for you to understand the context of the revisions that we are suggesting. SAP failed to gain passage at town meeting last year. Personnel Board undertook a comprehensive review of the Personnel Bylaw, which included meeting with Town Labor Council, Tim Norris. Not surprisingly, we all agree that the Personnel Bylaw has many issues, as it has been constructed piecemeal over many decades. Some provisions are not clear, even to the lawyers. The bylaw does not take cognizance of the later Town Administrator Bylaw, by which the town administrator was made the Personnel Director with Personnel functions, which I would argue overlap with the Personnel Bylaw. Some sections are inconsistent, some are impractical, some are unworkable, some need modernization. This is not to denigrate the work of any past board. This board recognizes that we're just one in a long line of citizen boards trying to do their best by the town and by the employees. It's just stated, so we're all on the same page as to where we're starting from, the SAP needs a lot of work. And I would remind you of something I have been reminded of for the past six months, it is a living document. When someone comes before the board and wants us to take action, we have to revise the bylaw. In fact, as we prepared for this meeting, we met last Friday and made some additional changes, so. With that said, the guiding factors for our revisions this year, Rome wasn't built in a day, we discussed a lot of things that we'd like to change, but we're gonna try to make limited changes this year. Let's get an SAP passed. Substantive changes should be important and limited, and in this context, we are not including the establishment of the HR position that was controversial last year at town meeting. We are including all the non-HR changes that were in there for last year. We coordinated and consulted with Mr. Purple and Ms. Hale, Ms. Hale I consulted with on a daily basis, and Mr. Purple came to many, if not most, of our meetings, as he is the Personnel Director. For the future, we have a lot we want to accomplish next year. Our review with Attorney Norris highlighted the fact that we should be doing a lot of this by policymaking and rulemaking, not by trying to change the bylaw every year. The Personnel Board is really hamstrung in doing what it needs to do if it has to wait up to a year for town meeting approval to get something done. So next year, I hope to be standing before you with a binder full of policies. Okay. So, our changes are in, two types administrative, that's just editing, moving language around, deciding what the title of the document should actually be, that kind of stuff. I won't go through that with you tonight. If anybody's interested in those sorts of edits, I can give you a nine-page detailed summary. So the substantive changes fall into five categories. One, we are removing contract positions, this is Schedule A. We were advised to remove the positions that are under contract, because if they're under contract, they don't belong in the SAP. That's the Director of Public Works, the Finance Director, and the Principal Assessor. Those are all contracted positions. Two, we made a change on Schedule D for parity with the union contract, that applies to detail call firefighters. Three, we made some changes to Section 16, recognizing that we have a Personnel Director and how we dovetail with him. That's by no means exhaustive, we hope to continue a dialogue with anybody who wants to have a dialogue about how the personnel function is handled in town. But for now, we have amended the bylaw, a new Paragraph 16B, to include that we have a Personnel Director. Okay, moving on, we have revisions which were approved by the Personnel Board upon petition of employees, department heads, boards, or committees. We have some new positions in Schedule A that are requested. One is an Assistant Library Director position. I've listed out some of the factors, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, you have it in front of you, do you want me to read the justifications for those?
You're giving the highlights right now, which is perfect.
Okay. Deputy Assessor position, this was put forth by the Principal Assessor as a more professional title for his employee and used in comparable towns. Moving on to page seven, reclassifications. Section four of the Personnel Bylaw requires the Personnel Board to seek town meeting approval for reclassifications, when we put a position into a different grade. We're seeking the following reclassifications. Director Counsel on Aging, from grade seven to grade eight. Police Lieutenant, those of you who know the history, there's a long history, the Police Lieutenant position is currently in its own schedule, should have been moved, I'm told, a long time ago, it's a full-time position, should be moved to Schedule A, and we're recommending it for grade eight. Conservation Agent, long overdue, upgrade from six to seven. The Economic Development Coordinator, this was in the bylaw last year in Schedule A, from grade 11 to grade 12. And last but not least, Principal Department Assistant in the Facilities Department, from grade four to grade five. Lastly, we have some changes that are proposed by the Personnel Board in our study of the SAP, in concert with the Personnel Director and the Assistant Town Administrator. We're recommending, in Section 7B and 11I pertaining to certain benefits, adding part-time employees such that they get those benefits. One is just that they can be reviewed prior to one year in exceptional circumstances, and certain educational bonuses in support that have been applicable to full-time employees. Last but not least, because everyone likes to bury a good lead, Schedule A, we're proposing a new salary grid. As you know, our grids or bands were put into place in 2015 with our landmark employee classification study. Believe it or not, we haven't upgraded the bands in, since that time, and it's almost, it's three going on four years. However, every year, we vote an annual adjustment, somewhere in the range of 2%. So what's happened is, we're giving the annual adjustment, but we haven't adjusted the grid to compensate. So, in concert with the Finance Director, Personnel Director, and our Gov. HR Consultant, we're recommending a 6% shift in the salary ranges. That's not a raise for people, that is to change the salary grid to reflect what we're already doing in terms of annual increases. And I think, I know that was too mu, way too much for Adrian, but hopefully it was just right for Dan.
That was outstanding, so thank you, and also thank you for volunteering. So I recall specifically, you spoke passionately, eloquently, decisively last town meeting about this particular article that was up and it failed. And, so I'd like to know, is, has everything that you did not like last year been cured through this year's effort, largely led by you?
Dan wants to know what my husband wonders on a daily basis. Am I happy? Yes.
Excellent.
Yes. We've got a great board, they worked really hard.
Excellent.
Little, it's a, it's gonna be a multi-year process. The Personnel Director has recommended, and they don't disagree, the SAP should be a whole lot shorter, and more should be done by policymaking and rulemaking to make it more flexible. You have an employee who comes before you in September, we say, "Great, you deserve everything, now let's see what happens next April at town meeting." It, it leads to some difficult circumstances. But yes, I'm happy.
Well, well...
Are you happy? I think Sam actually might be happy. Sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot.
So, so will, and, and will everything be on, on, on a town website, or all the changes, all the red lines in particular, language that was, that was being removed?
Yeah, you've got a track changes version, which is...
That was an issue.
Ready to go, we'll have that available this year, track changes version.
It'll be available in advance of town meeting?
Sure, we can throw...
We'll put it on the third town board section of the town website.
It'll be on the Personnel section of the town website.
But we've also asked the IT Director to create a town meeting section, so all of these documents are going to go there, so they will all be located in one place.
And we also have, it's at nine pages at this point, and it's a detail, for anybody who wants to see it, it has the section, the exact change that was made, down to "We struck this word," a comment on why we did it, and categorizing it as administrative or substantive.
Beautiful.
So that will be available as well.
Were there positions in the SAP that were below minimum wage? Are they still there?
Great question, thank you for asking that, because that came up last year. I was concerned about a statement, not so much about what we were paying, which is an issue, but that we were stating clearly what we paid. So Vanessa had a report done, there are a few seasonal workers in the Recreation Department who are paid, I think one was paid $8, I have a report that she gave me, a few at $9, but there are no full-time employees being paid below the higher wage. So just a review for anyone who doesn't remember, the federal minimum wage is seven and a quarter, the state wage is at 11. Towns and municipalities are not subject to the higher state wage. We currently work toward that, but we're not making a blanket statement that we pay it. All full-time employees are at 11 or above, but we do have some part-time rec workers who make less. Does that answer the question?
Yes, ma'am. All right, questions for Betsy?
Well done.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Outstanding work.
Thank you. Thank you to Jay, who didn't really know what he was getting into, but...
Well done, Jay.
Along for the ride.
Adrian, any comments for you or members of the committee?
Mr. Chairman, we, we don't wait for the Board of Selectmen anymore. We already had on the 28th of February a meeting where it was presented to us, there were four changes that were discussed with us at that point that have been incorporated, and we're aware of it, and as she said, I mean, it's probably the shortest meeting we've had, I complimented her on that. So we, we will, we will vote on it on Thursday night, I don't think we have any questions, unless there are any. We went through it in detail, more so than the Board of Selectmen did.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Okay, I'm quite comfortable with the article, and I would move that we vote to support it. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, all right, that one's unanimous. All right, next one, FY18 Budget Adjustments, Mr. Purple.
I'd ask Mr. Ballantyne to, to come forward, but at this point, on the, on the budget adjustments, we have none, and at this point, we don't anticipate any, something could change in the next three weeks, but at this point, we don't have any budget adjustments, so at this point, I would, I would leave that as, as at-town meeting. If something changes, you can always, you know, take another vote on that.
All right, I would concur, at-town meeting? Fellow members? Okay. FY19 Budget, Mr. Ballantyne.
Yes, good evening again. I'll also make Mr. Peters happy tonight, because this should be very quick. We, you did vote the budgets once prior, since we've had a few tweaks, very, very minor in nature for the most part, and in the right direction, which is another good thing. We basically had three adjustments, I highlighted two on your sheet that you probably have. There is a third, it was EDC, at the meeting, at advisory, the previous week, there was a, some type of error or, or thing that shouldn't have been in their budget, that wasn't known until the last minute, so we adjusted their budget down about $2,500, which was their suggestion, not, not anyone else's. So that resulted in a slightly lower budget for that board. We also had Conservation Commission, which is up about $3,000, for two reasons. One is the suggestion, I think, was made from this board, and was also echoed, at least unofficially, by the Advisory Board to increase that request that the Conservation Commissioner had for an hour a week, despite our policy of not adding hours this year, we felt that that was a worthwhile investment, it was only about $1,500, so I think that should probably get the support of everyone. I've talked to the Conservation Commissioner about that, and we'll see next year how these conservation restrictions go and, and the work that goes into them, and that, you know, should there be further adjustments needed. So she, last I knew, was happy with that. The other issue was the SAP, as you just noted in Betsy's presentation, there was a 6% adjustment to the grid that shifted, and, and you also probably noticed that the Conservation Commissioner is getting a grade change. Those two things resulted in her salary falling slightly below the minimum, so we had to adjust that up to the bare minimum, and so she's in the new grade now. So that was about another $1,500. That's, that's all that was done with that department, so that should be in good shape. The last issue, and you're aware of this, was the regional, the school Algonquin budget, the regional assessment. We did get the final numbers that were officially released last week, that were voted, and the regional schools were able to reduce their budget about $25,000. That's a combination of their operating assessment and their debt assessment. So that is now official, that's locked in. So the document you have before you now is the final, final version of the number you need to vote to support these, it's 53,628,271 at the bottom, that's the number you're looking for, and that's the number we should be proposing to town meeting to finalize these.
I would agree. Questions for Mr. Ballantyne? Ms. Fannin?
A real quick one. Assavet went up 9.23%, is that enrollment, or does that have to do with the building?
It's enrollment. It's enrollment. We gained a couple students there, yep.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Chairman, anything from you or your board?
Mr. Chairman, we actually voted on the budget on February 28th, and approved it pending the schools, which we will vote on, on, we still have to vote on that budget finally. And the situation regarding Concom, the Conservation Commission increased there, I did work with Brian on that, but that is a proposal from our, from my side, we will still have to, my committee has to, the committee has to vote on it.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make that clear, that the committee has to still vote on it.
All right, sir.
It was a feeling on my side, and we worked on it. It was a feeling on my side, and we worked on it.
Okay.
Depending on how you vote. But the only, so, we basically agreed to the budget already, except for two aspects, which is the schools, which came in lower. They already presented, so that'll basically be a short vote on our side. So, I think, I think this is basically, it's gonna be quick. I don't see any major issues.
Perfect.
It's been a good process. I, I do want to say something.
Please.
That is that Advisory this year, I can't speak for all the years before. I don't have time to look back that far. But we did get engaged a very early stage with Mr. Purple, Mr. Ballantyne. We, we got it, we knew what was coming down the road, and the committee worked on that during the whole process. So, there, there was a lot of work done. So, by the time we came to the final budgets, we didn't, you know, have to scramble to go through it. It's been a very good process, and I think it's been a big change on our side. And Mr. Purple can make a remark regarding that if he wants to. The one aspect that is not, I think, needs more work next year would be the capital budget. And to actually have for the town meeting, we did work on that with, to have for the town meeting a capital budget, that's not, that goes 10 years. And so, that we can see what is coming down the line and what's not. We did work on it on Advisory's side, and it was drafted. So, I think we would see an improvement there next year, if it's up to us. That's all on ours, on my side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the honor of serving on Advisory many years ago, and it is a significant amount of work that you and every member of Advisory does in order to help make this town operate efficiently. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and every member of Advisory. I agree. I think there was some great collaboration this year. Well done, Mr. Ballantyne. Well done, Mr. Purple. I would move that we vote to support the FY19 budget as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question for Brian. We're at 4.4% now increase. There are some warrant articles that involve borrowing for recreation and golf. Do you know if those pass, what the increase would be?
The overall tax rate, this is the operating budget, and there's another half of this, which is the, the warrant articles, that, the money warrant articles. Taking all that into account, and all the money transfers, et cetera, it's actually 3.82% is what our estimated tax increase is right now. It's a little less than that. The warrant articles that are still outstanding, that you're referring to, the Recreation and Golf, would comprise probably like a .6% somewhere right around there, tax rate increase, if everything was approved for next year. So, you'd be about at 4.4, 4.5, somewhere around there. Hopefully, the values would come in good next year, and we may even be lower than that, but that's about where you'd be, though.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Motion to support has been made. Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That one carries. Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. Next, we have the golf course capital improvements.
Do you want to just have?
Yep, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Kimberly.
Oh, yes. Yeah, Kimberly. Zero Kimberly. We, we talked about that last time. We, we have maps now. We know where it is. Everything's in order.
Everything is in order. We, yes, it's, it's obviously off of Woodland Road, about three acres total. There is some wet areas at the, at one area of the, of the property. Again, as Attorney Cipriano mentioned, we, the option to this would have been just to go through the regular normal foreclosure process, which would have generated costs on my side, his side, all sides, and taken up a lot of time. And we would end up at the same place, by the way. You'd just get a forec, you'd get a deed eventually that would, that the town would own. So, I haven't walked the property yet. That's the only little fly in the ointment. We will do that before town meeting with the Conservation Commissioner and the assessor, just as standard procedure. But it is, is my understanding, from talking from people, it's just a wooded area, like I said, wet. There's no, I don't think there's any downside in the town acting on this.
Yeah, we know where it is now. Okay. Any questions on that? That solves my question, and I think others. Okay. I would move that we support the conveyance of, for Zero Kimberly Lanes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ma'am? Yes.
Sorry, just one comment. Brian, when you do the walk with Conservation, can we include open space in that as well? I mean, not knowing.
Sure. I don't see why not.
It certainly wouldn't hurt just to have somebody walk, that's all.
Sure.
That's it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. And now, golf course capital improvements. Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as you will note, this is the, there is no dollar amount that is attached to this at this point. This is the capital, the portion of the improvements for the golf course concerning the relocation and reconnection of the clubhouse. There are other articles under consideration this evening, which we'll hear about, which are being done under CPA. CPC has agreed to provide over $600,000 in, in a cost for improvements to the golf course as a result of the moving things around, as, as a result of the construction of the Public Safety Facility. The portion involving the clubhouse is something that could not be considered under CPC, and therefore, it's being done in a separate borrowing article. We are getting bids, the construction of the Public Safety Facility. Bids will be back in time for town meeting, as add alternates as part of that, so that we can understand what the true costs will be. We have put in these costs of relocating the clubhouse and, and the parking lot, so that we know what these true costs will be for some of these articles, but this one specifically, because we're looking at borrowing. The, the working number at this point for the capital improvements, Article 15 for the golf, is $300,000. I think that's probably where you're going to be, but we will know better. Once the bids actually come in and we can refine that number, it's going to be, you know, right at the, right at the deadline as to, you know, we're going to be coming in the day of, day before, to get a sense of what that number is. But the working number is $300,000 for, for that article. And that is to, to move the clubhouse from its current location to a new foundation, hook it up to electric, hook it back up to septic, and prepare the clubhouse to continue the operation in the same fashion that it has. There's no enlargement of the existing clubhouse. There's no, you know, expansion or anything like that that, that's being done. It's simply taking what we have and moving it to a different location and, and putting it back into service.
All right. So, at-town meeting, sort of numbers, or?
You can do that at-town meeting. Like I said, it's, it's, it's going to be, you know, the ballpark is $300,000, but if you want to wait until town meeting, until we have a definite figure, you can do that as well.
Do we need to wait? I mean, since we don't have a definitive number?
You can wait, you can wait until we have a definitive, you know, until we have a definitive number. I think that, you know, obviously, you know, working with, with Mr. Ballantyne, you know, you're going to look at a borrowing for this. It's going to be a five-year bond. At most, a three-to-five-year bond. So, and, and I believe that the anticipated costs of that bond, as well as the impacts, you know, to the, to the average homeowner for that, were forwarded to you earlier this afternoon, so you had an understanding what those would be. So, but by all means, until we get some definitive figures, if you want to wait, you know, you can leave that at-town meeting at this point.
Thoughts from the members?
So, I think it sends a better message to the committees, and, you know, knowing that, how overwhelmingly this article passed at the special town meeting, I think it sends a stronger message, in my opinion. If we vote to, if we take a position on it now, hopefully that position is to approve it. So, rather than.
That's my position.
Even though the numbers aren't finalized, I think it sends a strong message that we're in support of this.
That's kind of where I was going with Mr. Purple, as to whether or not we can do that, even though we don't have numbers, we can vote to support it.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thoughts of the other members?
I mean, I think, given the support at town meeting, I would be in favor of it. I also think, you know, within reason, whatever the number is, it's going to be cheaper in the long run to have golf there than maintain it as open space. So, even if somebody wasn't necessarily a golf supporter, I still think it's important to support this article.
Yeah, I mean, the, my understanding is the, the prior St. Mark's Golf Course, the, had always made, or generally made, a profit every year. So, we would expect at least the same with the, the new Southborough Golf Club, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to Mr. Schifrin's point, because he does, he does bring up a good point. The, I did ask Ms. Gallagher to, to get some pricing. If that were to revert back to open space and given a conservation restriction, you know, nothing would happen on that, except for passive recreation. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to be mowing it two, you know, two times a week anymore, so. But in order to, the pricing that was gotten back, to simply go out and to mow it, each time we mow that, it's going to be about $5,500, $6,000 each mow. And so, assume that you're going to do that probably at least four times a year. So, that's an expense that we would have to build into, you know, to the budget in the alternative. So, if we do not continue golf at that location, there will be expenses that we will have to incur for that property. It's, it's not simply not doing anything. It's that we're just going to have to change.
Right.
You know, what we're doing and, and put funds in a different place.
Plus revenues we would not receive.
Correct.
All right. I'll make a motion to support the article. Yes, Ms. Fannin?
The number that you're suggesting, the $300,000, you're not expecting it to come in higher than that.
That's a number that, that the, that the Golf Committee has been carrying in consultation with the cost estimating that's been done by the Public Safety Committee. And, and when we went out and do these cost estimates for the Public Safety Facility, we've included the add alternates, so that we can get a sense of what we, you know, what we think the market is going to, is going to bear for those, for those pieces. So, yes, I don't anticipate it would be higher than that.
All right. Well, then, I would suggest that this board, if they decide to support a motion, that the number, the dollar amount of $300,000 is what was discussed this evening that we're supporting.
Yeah, but from my perspective, it came in at $310,000. I'm not going to suddenly not support it because of $10,000.
But if it came in at $375,000?
I'd still support it.
I'm not saying we're not going to support it, but I said, that's the number we're discussing this evening.
Yes, that is the number we're discussing. That's all the information we have right now.
That's, that's what's going to be printed.
The $300,000?
Right, in the warrant?
No, the article, no, it's printed as a sum of money.
A sum of money, okay.
This is a discussion that, that we have with council every year, because if you know the number, you should put the number in there. But we put in a sum of money to avoid any issues.
Got it.
Because you cannot increase the number. You can only decrease it.
So, I will say, I'm going to vote to support it as a sum of money, knowing what the ballpark is we're thinking about. Obviously, any member can vote to support it tonight, and if you find that it's at a number that you don't want to support at town meeting, you can change that at town meeting.
I think we're all supportive of it. But on the other hand, we're working with numbers that the end result have a tax impact. That's what I'm, that's my concern.
Well said. Okay. So, I'll move that we vote to support the article as written. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One, one opposed, okay. Four to one. All right, next. Recreation capital improvements. Mr. Purple?
I believe I'm going to turn this one over to Ms. LeValle.
Ms. LeValle, welcome.
We've got, we're being here tonight, so.
All right, welcome.
They'll come on up. Doreen could not be with us. She's on vacation. Hey, Dave. All right. So, while, excuse me, so, personal vault chair. We also got Jen Hansen co-chair with us, Sean Cronin, Dave Candela. And again, Doreen Ferguson couldn't be with us tonight. So, we were back here in November. We presented to you the presentation. It was working before.
Slow.
All right.
But feel free to.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So, the presentation in front of you, and hopefully that will get out for the audi, there we go. Audience, it's not, there, there's some similarities. For the benefit of the folks watching, we'll try to quickly summarize that. Appreciate, there's a lot of information here. We're not going to go through all 24 slides, I assure you. We'll try to keep this quick and just make sure we hit the highlights. Before we do go in, though, we wanted to ask, most of the time when we presented, whether to be Advisory, to the board, to other groups, questions do tend to lead to updates on our active efforts. So, we thought we'd kick off with that, with a very brief overview on that, because I think it helps in people understanding why we think we can now move forward with more efforts. So, just very quickly, we'll start with the highlight, 9/11 field. Where that work has gotten underway. Granted, these two storms, you know, are unfortunate, but we're on track. We have a May target, and we're feeling very good about that. So, that's a very exciting move for everybody, I think. The Choate Field lights and, the Choate Field lights and the fields, of course, that one had more issues along the road, which we've talked about. That is in the final stretch, I believe. Been talking to Karen, they were ready to connect, and then we ran into the storm. Final inspection, and then the lights will be good to go. And the fields need some maintenance to be ready for the spring season and playable. Playable. You know, there's work that we want to do on them down the field. Fayetteville Playground also, you know, home stretch there, aiming for the spring opening. There's some work to do with some final small installations, I believe. And then, for ADA compliance, the ramp needs to be put in, which requires asphalt, so again, weather dependent. But things seem to be good there. Mooney Field and Richardson Tennis Court lighting, planning's in progress for those. Very quickly, we've talked about this with you before. We've talked about it with Advisory since the town administrator. You know, how are we going to ensure that some of the bumps hit in the road with some of these projects, specifically Choate and Fayetteville, won't happen again? You know, there was funding issues, design changes. But in short, you know, we're committed, and we speak often about making sure that going forward, we will have full funding. We will not move forward with the project unless the funding requested is what's provided. We've built in contingencies, as you'll see tonight when we talk about the specific articles we're presenting. And project management will be there, and is assumed for each project. So, again, we, we have learned from the past projects. We believe we felt to be built in sufficient steps going forward, and we feel confident in what we're going to present tonight in terms of projects that we want to move forward with. So, why don't I take a pause there, though, and see if there's any questions from the board on current efforts?
Questions yet? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Rocky?
Just one quick question. So, my understanding is now Fayetteville is fully funded, and we're just waiting on some minor installations? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, again, this is something that you're all very familiar with, so just for the benefit of folks who may not be, the facilities master plan study. So, what is this? It started, I believe, in '16. We contracted, but in 2017, we worked very closely with Par Corporation and Birchwood Design Group. And basically, they took a study. They looked at our inventory of fields and gyms. They looked at the quality, the demand for them, and issues. They went into the draining for fields. They looked at draining, sod, irrigation, environmental considerations, ADA compliance. I mean, everything that we would need to know about the current state of our facilities. They also looked at, again, demand, what were user groups getting from the fields, what were they not getting from the fields? How much were we overusing our fields? And what are the capabilities of those fields? And that ultimately led into repairs that they felt we needed to do, opportunities to increase our, our playing time, or our, it's not really just about the fields, but providing more opportunity for all of our citizens to use, whether it be the fields, the tracks, or the gyms. And the costs, you know, and that's key, and why we feel, again, confident in what we're presenting in our articles. You know, the cost estimates on what that would take in a lot of detail. The, the facility study's been out there. You can rec, for those who want to see it, it's, it's available via the Recreation website. I think we did have some copies planted, I think, at the library and the town hall. And I don't know if they're still there, but certainly, if someone wanted to see a printed copy, we go everywhere with it. So, moving on. So, for those that haven't seen it, it's really big. And this is our facilities master study, and it's got just a ton of information. It's pretty interesting. But it also has millions and millions of dollars of suggestions. And we recognize, of course, that, that wasn't something we could go forward. And we recognized, of course, that, that wasn't something we could go forward with. So, we set out some planning objectives for us, like what was going to guide our decisions, on what we wanted to put forward, or, or the plan that we wanted to put in place, again, quickly, ensuring safe and quality conditions across our facilities. The fields are playable, but certainly, if we continue down the path we're going through, we don't think they are, they're not optimal by far, and, and we need to start making some improvements to ensure that they are, remain playable and safe. We want to move into a regular maintenance cycle. We've learned so much about a regular maintenance cycle. Jen's going to discuss that briefly in a few minutes, but that's essentially the, the ability to restore our fields, but then create an environment in which we can rest them and maintain them properly, so we don't end up back where we are. So, Jen, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. We want to alleviate congested schedules and provide more playing time. The study demonstrates, and we'll, we'll have to post these slides somewhere, so folks in the audience can read it, but in the appendix, we put kind of the executive summary of what they found in this study. It's available in the study, too, and it just clearly demonstrates, we're overing, overusing our fields, we're not meeting demand, and we have gaps in coverage. For example, in our ability to provide older adult leagues, or older youth sports, full-size regulation fields. We're falling short. Recognizing and adapting to cultural changes to better support working parents and extended work hours, we need to create the ability to support longer hours and longer seasons. You know, there's seasons starting, scheduled to start soon in the beginning of April, but everyone's kind of got their fingers crossed, because depending on the weather, that just may not happen. And then that creates congestion on the schedules, stress on everybody. So, we want to alleviate that. We'll talk about that more in a second. And lastly, maximize the use of our current recreation footprint, hopefully mitigating future needs and costs to acquire new property. Our goal is to do what we can with what we have. There's not a ton of land left, but also, you know, we think we have a lot available to us if we do the right things now. Again, we'll talk about that in a moment as it relates to our articles. So, now, moving into the articles. We had to take this study that had, you know, people kind of, I think, wonder why it took so long. The study was initially published in the first half of sixteen. There was some changes made, excuse me, seventeen, changes made later in seventeen. During that time, we had to take what was millions of dollars of suggestions and measure that up against our objectives, and come up with a plan that was conservative, yet would meet our objectives and allow us to meet the demand of the community, while create, you know, repairing our fields and making sure that they remain safe and playable. So, we continued to work with Parr and Birchwood to pull out of this what we felt was the more critical elements, what we needed to repair, how could we get to a maintenance cycle, and how could we meet, again, all of our objectives, including expanding our available field time. So, from that, we carved out, I'd say, the first phase of our effort, and that's what we're putting forward in this year's town meeting art, warrant. Three articles. The first is to start our repairs, starting with De Petrie Field in front of Neri School, Calander Field, which is off of Route thirty, and now, kind of like the Framingham side of town, and then the Trotter Track. The second project that we're going to be presenting, our article, is that we want to take the next step in moving forwards to putting a turf field at Neri School. Again, we'll talk about that more in a second, but we're not going for the whole ask. Again, we think learning from past projects, the next logical step for a project that size is to complete further design work and get the permits to start down that road, to make sure that, you know, we're, we're understanding all of the costs and considerations as we move forward. And the last one, very similar, is funding for consultation and design work on Lundblad Field. And that one's really interesting. I'll hold back, you know, we've learned, again, a lot about that, and we'll talk more about that when we get to the specific article. So, Article sixteen. So, this one, you know, quite frankly, you know, in our opinion, all of this, quite frankly, and all of her opinion, is we, we originally presented this together as a phase of a project, because we really feel all these pieces we're presenting are needed to get us on the path to a maintenance cycle and to, you know, achieve our objectives. But we did also, taking in the feedback from folks like Board of Selectmen members and Advisory Committee members, split it into three to represent three distinct projects. The first are the field repairs. These are not, the field and track repairs, I should say. These are not the only repairs in this report, and they're not the only ones that are going to be, need to be done at some point, but they were the logical starting point. So, De Petrie, again, is in front of Neri Field. It's used by younger kids, lots of seven-by-seven games, so under, under ten, under nine, I think. You know, it has never had drainage. It's, that field's been here, I can say safely, because I know for a fact, at least forty years. So, when it was put in, it didn't have drainage. That has led to problems down the road, and I don't think there's any, been significant maintenance on it. It needs to be fixed. It's not level. The ball goes rolling off the field. Calander Field is a semi-newer field that was put in by some developers who built that fifty-plus community. It's actually a, a better field. It's, in terms of fields, most of our fields are something called a level four. It's a level five. I won't go into all the details of why, but part of it is drainage. And again, it's, it's a great opportunity to, to create another eleven-by-eleven-sized field to help us get into this, create more capacity, but also allow us to get to a maintenance cycle where we can rest other eleven-by-eleven fields. We have a shortage of those in town. And then the Trotter School Track, I think it was built late nineties, just go to the track. I mean, that, that's just, you know, if you go to the track, the, the rubber needs to be repaired, so that's the, what this cost represents. So, you know, again, just to summarize this one, it's our town property. It's our assets, and we need to take care of it. We need to ensure they stay safe, and we need to start moving towards a, a cycle that would allow us to continue to take care of them appropriately. Article seventeen. So, this is to start down the road towards building a turf field at Neri. We have nine eleven turf. It's, it's not optimal, because there's a lot of constraints we have, because that's actually a state-owned property. So, there's a lot we cannot do on that field. We still believe we need it, but we would also like to move towards Southborough having its own turf field that could support multiple sports, amongst other things, regulation-sized baseball fields, regulation-sized soccer fields. A lot of towns are moving in this direction, and it's time that we start moving in this direction as well. Turf brings with it, you know, a, a whole slew of additional benefits. I spoke about, you know, wanting to start some sports here in early April. This week's not making me feel too good about it. If we had a turf, we'd be able to get out there earlier, and we'd be able to stay out there longer, and not just youth leagues, but adult leagues, and also, people who are willing to rent it. We've talked to people like Saint Mark's who rent their turf, and I think we talked, I, don't quote me on this, but we talked to them months ago, and they were already, like, filled up. So, there's demand, and we've talked to the youth sports who we know are going out and renting turf. You know, we want to keep folks in our town, and we'd love to provide them the ability, but in addition, we could make some revenue off of this as well to offset the costs in the future. And then, again, it's going to support longer hours. Everybody who has been there in the fall knows that there's this mad rush to get whatever you want to get in done by five forty-five, because the sun starts going down, and, and, you know, again, you're using your cars to light up the field. Okay, Lundblad. This one's interesting, and I don't know if a lot of people know about Lundblad Field, but very quickly, if you're driving down Parkerville, if you envision the property right in front of Neri School, it's a former landfill, and there's like a little place where you can drop folks off. I encourage you, go park there and walk up there. It is amazing how big this piece of property is. And if you've never been forced to go up there, you may not have. I actually went up there, and I took some pictures, and at first, my daughter was like, get out, and then I told her, don't get in, actually, because it shows you how immense this piece of property is, and this really aligns to our objective of, let's make sure we're making the use of our existing footprint before we look at other alternatives. This would go a very long way in our ability to rest our fields because of the size, the number and size fields we can get up there. We'd get more playtime. We'd be able to, again, have more fields available to rest. What, what we don't know about this is it's, it's on a landfill. The existing membrane's starting to be exposed. We need, we, we don't want to just put in the costs of the, the projects that we were given. We want to do additional, we need to do additional investigation with an environmental consultant and others to make sure that if we do invest the money here, that it, that, A, we can do it, and that, you know, over time, those fields will maintain their integrity, they won't settle, things like that. So, it's worthwhile investment, because again, if you look at that piece of property, if it is something we can use, it's, it's huge, and hopefully, we'd mitigate our need to look elsewhere in the future. All right. So, we got this question a lot. It's, it's a tough year. It will be probably a few tough years in terms of expenditures for the town. And yet, you know, again, I'll stress two things. We tried to take a conservative approach to this. We were presented with a huge amount of volumes of projects and things we want to do. We're trying to space it out while still taking the right steps to not kind of continue to kick the can down the curb. So, again, our last, our last facility study was done in nineteen ninety-nine. And, and one thing I should mention, too, that without the facility studies, you know, we haven't been able to do sufficient capital planning. So, that's another reason why this facility study is so key to us, because now we actually can sit down and make a five-year, ten-year capital plan, which, you know, we're working on, I'll talk about in a second. So, again, there was a point in time where the fields were being rested, and then demand increased, and, you know, they weren't rested, and now we find ourselves in this spot where now we are having to come in a relatively shorter amount of time with bigger asks to fix those things and allow us to get into a maintenance cycle. So, these costs are inevitable, so the further we move them down, you know, again, we're just kind of extending that, that, that place we need to get to in terms of proper maintenance of our fields. So, you know, the last point here on this slide is, is this it? No. We don't want anyone to think this is it, and, and there won't be more to come. This is the first phase of an effort. You know, down the road, we will need to look at, well, what we would hope to do next is be looking at Lundblad and Neri, provided those design efforts go well. Choate Field and Finn, as well, also need work to be done, and there's even more there. So, we are working on laying that out. So, no, this is the first phase, but we think it's critical to start that first phase, so we can get where we need to go and stabilize the costs. So, with that, I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Jen, because I've said the word, I've said maintenance cycle over and over again. We just want to make sure everybody has an appreciation of what that is, and then, I promise, we'll be done.
Yeah, so, when we talk about this, um, there's, this was a lot of detail in our study, but pulling forward just to make it easier to understand. So, for example, this is a spring usage of our fields, and these are hours per month. And, so, fields are recommended to see about sixty hours of play or eighty hours of max. So, you can see when we draw the line, all of our sod fields are being way overused. So, we, not only can we not rest our fields, we actually, we're actually overusing them. And when we're playing on these fields, the fields are taking damage, so the inability to rest or additional hours actually causes more damage. So, as much as we try to maintain the maintenance on here, and we're doing everything we should from like a maintenance schedule, because we're overplaying them and we are never resting them, they're, they're actually deteriorating faster than they should. So, we have, in the study, there's data for additional fields and other seasons as well, but this is, is kind of illustrate, there's been a lot of questions of, like, well, how much are we really overusing them, and do we really have this problem? And we, especially for, like, spring, illustrating that we have a big problem, that we don't have enough fields. The other thing to note is that the synthetic turf fields, actually, you can get two X the playing time on them. So, investing in synthetic fields actually will help us. So, this, like, coming back online, like, end of the spring season, and for next spring, having nine eleven, we can actually shift these hours over to the turf, and in the future, the Neri turf will allow us to actually take, start taking these fields offline, and let them, let us rebuild them and rest them, and then get into this cycle. So, when we talk about a maintenance cycle, just so people kind of more clearly understand what we're talking about. So, a field, you're supposed to play on it for four years and then take it offline to rest. So, in year five, we take it offline, and you literally, we're just letting it rest. We're letting the grass grow back. We're doing additional maintenance on it and helping it just, like, come back and take that, that extra stress off it. Then you can play on the, the field for another four years before we have to take it offline again, but do some, like, extra maintenance. So, every ten years, it's recommended that we do, like, additional maintenance. So, like, we're doing, like, like, investing in the soil, and like, what else does it need? Like, and there's all kinds of tests to tell us, like, what we're missing, or what we need, or, like, filling, like, regrading and stuff like that. So, every ten years, there is going to be some sort of additional investment, depending on the field. The more we can rest them, and the more we can bring down our playing time, the, the less of investment that should be on that tenth year. So, and this is, and as we start thinking about our fields, when we talk about, like, our maintenance cycle, we really want to take a field offline and be able to pull another one back online. So, we actually want to stagger these. So, every five years, a different field or a different set of fields should be coming offline to rest, and others are available. So, we will be, as we, so as we invest in De Petrie and Calander, like, we're gonna, we're gonna put this investment and fix the fields. They are going to rest on the fifth year, and they're going to come offline on the tenth year. So, the reason why we feel so passionately that investing in Lundblad and Neri turf is that, so, these fields are coming offline in ten, in five years and ten years, and if we don't have any place to put those sports teams, like, another turf, or be able to work on Lundblad, like, we, we literally, as town, will not be able to have them playing. They're going to have to look elsewhere. So, as we start investing in our maintenance cycle and fixing fields, we, we're kind of starting the clock, and if we, so we've been looking at, how do we flight our fields, and what does this look like? And if we, if we do all this work, then we're going to have to take them offline. So, just for people to understand that this kind of kicks off a cycle, and that if we don't start thinking longer term about where we're going to put these sports teams and, and other players, we're going to get caught where we actually won't be able to service the, the teams in town.
So, just very quickly to wrap up, I, I'll skip to point three, that, well, the, the other things, as Jen mentioned, we've started laying out, you know, what that cycle looks like, and that now becomes the foundation for a capital plan, which we have lacked until now. So, with that, we will be submitting, I won't make it into, I understand, this cycle, but we will be submitting to Mark what that layout now looks like. And so, again, the, the facility study's been absolutely essential in letting us do that. So, again, since we last met with you, we've, we've also, you know, making the effort to make sure we're meeting more regularly with advisory, town administrator, town accountant. We've met with the schools. The schools seem, a lot of you had had some questions on the school when we came last time, and we've, Christine, have had discussions with Christine about that. They continue to, or she's continued to voice support, and we're pursuing kind of something more formal in the form of a letter prior to town meeting to solidify that. And also, I believe, I wasn't part of this conversation, but Doreen, and she talked about formalizing just the relationship in general regard, around projects going forward as well, to alleviate any future concerns. We also got some good advice from advisory, or some feedback in terms of making sure that if we do do this, and Jen alluded to it, we need to come up with a policy, and we need to work more with the sports, use, the sports association, whether it be the youth and adult leagues, and tell them what fields can be used. And, you know, fields will come offline. If we make this investment, we are committed to doing that. And so, we will need to set forth policies and schedules as to what can be used and when, and just kind of maybe formalize that a little bit more. I guess the last thing I'll say is that we haven't been, we've kind of wanted to get to this point in terms of really starting to go out there and, and share more details and educate the public on the plan before town meeting. That will start tomorrow, I believe. We have a series of communications that we're planning, leading up to a forum that will, will hold on Monday, March twenty-sixth at seven at the Senior Center. Kind of informal, but just to let people come and ask questions, and we can share more pictures and details from the plan. So, we are planning over the next few weeks to really get out there and help folks understand what we tried to help everyone understand today.
Thank you, ladies. Very well stated, very well presented. I, just a few questions. I guess, I, I understand now why my backyard looks like it does. I guess I should have taken it offline every five years. I, I, I love the idea, and I love the, the, you know, the, you know, looking long-term as to, you know, what we need to do to provide safe and usable fields for our, for our kids. In terms of synthetic, the, the artificial turf fields you're thinking about, I've always heard that issue of, well, those can be harder on kids' knees and whatnot, but I think with new technology, that, that, that's a lot better now. Is that correct? And have you researched any of that? Have you heard that as well? Because I've had that comment made.
No, I mean, we've discussed the benefits of turf at length with Birchwood and Parr, and that partic, has not come up. But we can certainly look into that, yeah.
It's a safety enhancer now. It used to, I remember when, when turf It's a safety enhancer now. It used to, I remember when, when turf came back, when I was playing a long, long time ago, that was always an issue about whether or not it causes more injuries to kids. And, but I think in significant, that question may come up at town meeting.
Okay.
So it's something to be prepared for. Is, and are the turfs that you're looking for, do they have heating elements underneath at all? Have you thought about that?
No, but I think that's why we want to pursue the design costs. So we did have in, within our plan, an estimate and it's, I won't pull it up now for the interest of time, but actually it should be in here, of what they looked at and included in the field study. So if I look at this quickly, I don't see anything that jumps out about heating. But if you look at slide 17, that kind of details the extent to which they took it. But for all the reasons that you're kind of saying it, we recognize that for an investment of this size, there's probably a lot more we need to consider. And why it makes sense to first take that step of just investing in the design. So we have a clear, eyes wide open on what we want to do, what we don't want to do and the cost of that.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Fana?
Thank you. Well done. I do have a question though. Back in 2015, you went before the planning board and conservation to support a turf field at Fay Field in Marlborough. Well, Fay School, but it's located in Marlborough. Did that happen? Are you paying for it?
We're not paying for anything, no, with Fay turf.
For the turf?
I believe the project is, and I looked to myself.
Yeah, there's still work, yeah. I think they're, this is the one where they're having some challenges, I think, with some like, some residents, whether or not they can put the turf in, but we're not, we're not involved in that.
It's a simple question. Is, has the field been installed? Is it turf?
No.
And is there a financial arrangement for you?
No.
There's no commitment?
No.
Alright, because I followed that when it was before and I did look up Southborough Youth Soccer and you have a fact sheet. So there is no lease arrangement and no commitment to that approval.
Not with Southborough Recreation.
Southborough Youth Soccer Association? The reason I ask that,
Good question, it's a good question.
Because we're building soccer fields. And if Southborough, not just soccer, but they are fields that are being used for soccer. And there was a presentation before conservation and the planning board for Fay Fields, for Fay School in Marlborough location. And there was a commitment by the organization to help in that process. And on your own fact sheet, it says that there's a lease arrangement for time and that you're paying for the turf. I didn't, I just printed it today.
I would, I'll go out and say this, if it was 2015, that makes it difficult for those of us here, so we'll have to defer to recreation. But I will tell you this, to the extent of our knowledge, Southborough Recreation is not involved in any type of arrangement or with that particular project. We have met with Southborough Youth Soccer Association several times. We're very much in support, I don't want to speak with them, but have been very supportive of our efforts in moving this forward. Whether or not they're still engaged with that, with Fay there, I'd have to defer that question to them.
Well, the reason I'm asking that, I understand why you want the fields. I'm supportive of it. But if you're going to start bleeding off of each other, you're going to have a hard time bringing in the necessary fees to support your own programs. So I'm putting a caution out there that that has to be answered before town meeting. Because if you are supporting a turf field on another property, you have the ability to rest a field to use the field that you're supporting. I mean, that really needs to be answered.
Okay.
Well, that's all. You can give a more formal. You need a mic.
Southborough Youth Soccer and Fay School does not have an agreement. As of right now, it expired. There's nothing going forward with that at the moment.
Okay. Yeah, I think you really need to find out how far you're going to stretch yourself.
Are there other questions? Ms. Brocchio?
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions for you. I've, I've had a lot of conversations with people around town. So I have some questions that were asked of citizens as well as some questions for myself. A question on Calander Field. It's listed on your master plan for Calander Field. Let me just pull this up real quick too. I believe it's listed for $220,000 on your master plan, but you're asking town meeting for $267,400. What accounts for that difference?
So there will not be a direct correlation to everything that you see here to what we put in the article for two primary reasons. The first was that we took that, that was their, their advice, right? And then we worked with Par and Birchwood to really talk about what our needs, what could we take out? What did maybe we have to add in? And then on top of that, one of the most significant changes is they assumed a 5% contingency. And again, going back to our lessons learned, we changed that to 30%. So all of those things combined, I mean, I, we could look more specifically at what we did with Calander, but that's why you will not see a direct correlation to what was in the field, the study, to what finally made it into the article. But we feel more confident with those numbers and they have more contingency built into them.
Okay. De Petri Field, I cannot find that in your master plan again.
It's, uh,
Anywhere.
Got me at first too. They list it as like East Soccer Field or something like that.
Because at the beginning, not to interrupt, but at the beginning, when you look at the fields themselves under the master plan, it shows De Petri Field, Field H, Neary School, page 11 in the plan. It lists it there, but when I go to the back for Field H, it doesn't correlate back to there.
I had had the same problem initially when I was actually looking for a picture of it. It was absolutely included. They list it as, like the, if you give me a moment, like,
Yep.
East Soccer Field or something like that. That's Neary. So there's the Northeast Soccer Fields.
East Soccer Field.
The East, they refer to it later on with pictures as the East Soccer Field.
On 88.
On, yeah. We had a couple of different printed copies.
Okay. But I understand that's, that's for the analysis. But when you actually have your costs put together in the back under section five, I don't, I can't find it there. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out where the number came from for, for that field when I don't see any correlation under page 142, which is for Neary Athletic Fields. I kind of looked through and I didn't see it anywhere. So I'm just, I'm trying to get an idea of where that number came from.
From working with Par and Birchwood. So again, we took,
So it's not part of your master, the master plan that you've put forth, it's in addition? I'm just trying to get an idea.
So they, they looked at it, they considered it. When they did their cost analysis, they were looking at the larger project, I believe. Like assuming that we would do that, we said, no, take a step back. And this is some of those discussions we had with them following the creation to say that we cannot do that right now. This field, though, the East Field, as you referred to, it does need repairs. They did do subsequent site visits as well. So, so I guess to your point, what we can do is go back to them and ask for the itemized, for them to build an itemized list that leads up.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's, we're allowing the public to go and look at this master plan to get an idea, but at the same time, they can't tie back in your articles to your master plan. That's all.
I'm sorry to jump in, you're accurate. I, I just think that this being called a master plan, it's more of a study. The master plan is what we were trying to, I, I, I don't want to confuse things anymore. But this was a study taken for everything across that we need. And then we're narrowing it down into a master plan. Does that make sense?
No, it does make sense.
But that's, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. And so it's a very good point because things changed after this was certified. So that's where here, you would have that cost breakdown that was subsequently provided by Par and Birchwood, so the same consulting firms. So we can't go back and change the study.
No, no, no. Agreed.
So we'll have to figure out how to make sure that a presentation like this gets publicized.
Just so people understand what you're looking for. It's, it's a comment. Also,
If I can just add to that.
Yep.
Ironically, I think that the numbers for De Petri are not in the printed binder because Par and the consultants that went out, the field is in such bad shape. I don't think that they considered it a field when they initially did it. And we had to go back to them and tell them that it's actually one of our most used soccer fields and that we did need the numbers because we do need to use it. So just to stress the importance of, you know, how it's considered or what outside people think of the fields just adds the idea that it's really needed.
Absolutely. And it's just, to make clear, these are questions I'm sure you're not only going to get from me.
Well, I think your point that Dave made and you made is that somehow we got to bridge the gap for folks better between what's in here and what we're presenting to you.
This is being referred to as the master plan. And typically, your master plan has what your goals are. I mean, I would like to see, not obviously for town meeting, but in the future, I personally would just like to see, you know, what, what your goals are in a real master plan. To continue on, can you, just, just a question on the turf field for Neary School. I'm trying to under, get an idea. This is a question for me. Other towns, I looked at other towns and looked at the number of fields and turf fields that other towns have in relation to population and size and programs as well. And I'm just trying to get a feel where certain towns, Marlborough for instance, just got their first turf field in 2016. So, and they have a population, I think it's 39,000 versus Southborough, just over 10,000. So I just want to understand why you feel the need for the turf field. And that's not just for me. I'm sure there's other people that have those questions as well.
Yeah, I think the decision wasn't made comparing ourselves to other towns. I mean, certainly it's hard to not see the increasing, you know, you go and you see these, these fields and it's hard not to notice that. However, that's not what we base our decisions on and what other towns are doing. It was purely on the recommend, the usage analysis, which Jen alluded to, and our objectives in terms of what we need to create and deliver to the town, what we can do with our grass fields and what we need to do to supplement that. And the turf field, again, based on all of those factors, seemed to be the obvious recommendation to make. So, you know, I think other towns struggle with, with the same decision as we do. So certainly, we took note of the other turf fields, but really that had no, no concern. It was our own usage, the findings from the study, the executive summary, which I did pull out. It's right in the beginning of the study for those who might go look at it. I pulled it out into the appendix. Pretty much sums it up in terms of where we are. And this day and age, the logical place to go to resolve a lot of issues easily is, is a turf field.
Okay. And I'm not disputing your data. I'm just asking the question that I would assume other towns as well have many fields. Maybe there's more fields in Marlborough. I don't know. But they've, they've made use, and again, we're asking the taxpayers for, you know, monies to do this and to fund a study to do this. So I think it's great that we have all the facts out there so the citizens can make an informed decision. I think that benefits all of us. Couple more question. Are the lights included? I would assume with a turf field, the turf is more beneficial if there's lights. So, and looking at your costs again, and I know it's, it's not a master plan, it's a study.
Right.
Based on the study, I don't see lights for Neary even included in there. I mean, is, is that in your master plan, your goal, what you would like
Yes.
to have as well?
Yes.
Okay. Question I've been asked too is, are we overbooking our fields? In order to, again, to understand that this, I know you have a master plan and I understand we got into a position and we're trying to get out of that position and not put ourselves there again. But, so is it, is it potentially because we're overbooking that we don't have the space on our fields for the teams? Or, and it may be a very simple answer is just that, you know?
I think, so we have more demand than we have field space. So not only are we overplaying on our fields, they're also looking outside of the town and renting, or renting from St. Mark's and Fay and even going up to the high school as well. So we kind of have both problems. And that, that is kind of another reason why the turf, the turf is the equivalent of two grass fields.
Right.
So because we don't have as much space available to us to put fields, converting something into turf actually gives us like double the space essentially.
And that's a really good point. And that's a good suggestion for you include in your public forums, it's just that. Because some people don't have children that play on the fields and may not understand these points. So these, these are very important points. So, let's see.
Just on that note, again, I noted it, that again, coming, this was a discussion with advisory that we took under discussion and we will commit to developing a policy to ensure that even if, you know, we just do these, these fields, we will implement a policy to ensure that even if the demand is there, we need to rest them. We really want to avoid the situation where we're turning away, you know, members, leagues, adult leagues and youth leagues from our own town. Hence why these other projects are so important.
Okay. Just a couple more questions. I know, sorry.
No, it's good.
De Petri Field, I would assume that if town meeting funds the upgrades, that summer nights won't be parking cars on the field any longer. I get asked that an awful lot. So, just to throw that out there. So, okay. And how many phases are you planning? Just, again, so people have an idea when you come to town meeting this year for this amount. Is this something you're phasing over the next five years, 10 years? Can they expect to see? Again, it's about an informed decision. It's informed for me, it's informed for the public. And that way, no one thinks that anybody's hiding anything. So I don't know how many phases you're planning. I don't know if you're doing, this is phase one and, you know, two or three years later, you're going to come down the road? Or are you planning to come back next year to town meeting with a second phase? Just trying to get an idea of your phasing.
So our current plan is not to necessarily come back to town meeting like with warrants. Our plan is to get into the capital budget. So that's what we've got. We've got like at least the next five years thought through.
Okay.
And like, we need to work through that with Mark. And it's something that once we, once we kind of have it worked through there, we can share that also, which we can probably publish on our own site before town meeting, so people can see that as well.
That would be great.
But, and then we're also starting to draft out like the next like 15 years, just the cycle of our fields. So that we have an idea of, okay, as we start fixing these, what is now coming offline and stuff like that. So we have been looking at that and working on that.
I greatly appreciate you going into the capital process on this. I think that benefits everybody in knowing in advance what we do.
So Ms. Brocchio, just to jump in for one second before you go on.
I'm almost done, actually.
And it is a two-step process. So recreation will take a look and say, here's the projects we've got, here's the years we'd like to do them. And then they'll give them to us and, and I'll sit down with Mr. Ballantyne and say, okay, where do we think they line up? You know, in a perfect world, we think they line up the same way that rec wants to do them. But in order to try and make sure that we're not doing this with our capital funding every year and there's some consistency with it, it may be, we want to shift this year. Is there the thought that maybe we flip this project, that we do something like this and that? So once we get that from, from recreation, we can then, you know, take a look and see what makes sense and then have those discussions. But, but absolutely, that's, you know, that's the hope is that we can put this inside the capital process moving forward.
And just, if I could just add to that, why, again, in order for us to be able to do that, again, we put forward three car articles, but we truly feel so strongly that the three need to go together for all the reasons we talked to tonight, but also to allow us to start doing that capital planning because, you know, if we don't get one out of the three, then it's back to the drawing board. And so.
One final question. And thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it. And on the turf fields, if, if the study gets approved at town meeting and you go forward, what is your timeframe in looking towards, you know, possibly doing and going in that direction for a turf field? Because I think in, in looking at your study, that, that that's probably one of the most, that and I think Finn are your most two cost, yeah, projects. So just, and I know it's going to go through the, the capital plan now, so that can be altered or whatever. But just in your minds, just an idea of when you would like potentially to see that, where it ties into your maintenance schedules that you've put in place.
So I think what we've been, what we're looking at now and hoping is that like, so this goes through and gets approved and we kick it off immediately this summer, starting to do some of this in design work investigation. And so we see it as almost kind of like a year-long process of figuring out like what we, what our options are, getting a lot of input from like the town, what they want to see and exploring that. And then being able to come up with like a final design that we want, that, that then the hope is in the like, it's going to take us a year to do that kind of work. And then the following year, being able to start solidifying some of the numbers we have in the capital budget to say, okay. And even there, when it comes in, like we could start, to say, okay. And even there, when it comes in, like, we could start putting things in piecemeal. So if we can't afford it all in one year, we could start getting the field in and then add on incremental. So I think our thought is that probably not next year, but the following year, we'd like to start like breaking ground on it and getting that moving. So that we can have it up and running by the time Calander comes offline for a year five rest. Because that's one of our larger fields. So we want to be able to have them up on the turf.
Okay. And just one final thought is, I think it's great that you're having a form and that you're going to explain what you're doing to the public. Because I think that's a really great opportunity for, again, the public to be informed. But, and I would say going forward as well to, you know, I mean, not everybody uses Recreation. So it gives them the opportunity to play a part and, you know, be informed as well. So, thank you.
All right. Ms. Schiffern?
Yeah, thank you. I think the presentation was great. These have been things that have been known by Recreation for, you know, as long as I was on there, that we needed improvements to our field. And we couldn't really do anything because we didn't have the study. And now that the study's been done, I think you've done a great job analyzing it and pulling out the most critical things that need to be done now, you know, should have been done years ago, but that will really get it going. And I look forward to you, I mean, I hope these are supported. I look forward to you working with the town administrator, finance director, advisory, to really lay out that plan. I think what you've done with the maintenance plan is bringing Recreation, you know, like years ahead of where we were with everything that was done in the past. So I think it's great. And I'll just kind of, well, in comparison to other towns, I wanted to address that too. A lot of our fields are affected negatively by water and drainage. So there's many times when other towns around us are using their fields and we're not. So these improvements would help with that. Turf especially would help with that. And maybe one of the reasons why, you know, we with a smaller number than Marlborough may need it more. I think the demand is out there incredibly, both in town and from outside to rent it. And lastly, I think that these improvements in Recreation amenities in general are much more than just the kids playing soccer. And, you know, to the notion that not everyone uses it, I really do think that they affect real estate values, they affect what EDC, Economic Development, is trying to do in town. So they really kind of branch out into a lot of areas. So supporting these articles to get the ball rolling, to allow those things to improve, I think just helps in a lot of areas. So thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Schiffern. Other comments? Okay. Couple of follow-ups. Okay, so I understand that there's, could be lighting involved. And have you looked into whether or not CPA money would be available for that?
We haven't yet, but that's where like what we're, so the money that we're asking for is just to help us get started to figure out those things. And it's also something where like, so what we've budgeted is what we think will get us like all the way through to like permitting. But if we start down a path and realize it's not going to work or we can't find funds or something like that, we can pivot earlier. But I think we won't actually know exactly what we want to do until we get a little bit further down the road on this.
Okay.
And then we'll start exploring like, you know, are there CPC funds? Are there other funds? Or, the other thing that comes with turf fields is potentially the ability for corporate sponsorships and stuff like that.
Sure.
So there's a lot of avenues we could explore to fund this further. I think we need, but we need to know what we're actually asking for first.
All right. Thank you. And there's a, so the contingency that you have in there is around a 25% contingency? Is that?
Thirty.
Thirty percent?
On the field and the track.
And normally, aren't contingencies maybe 10% or so, or 5%?
Five percent was what Parr and Birchwood, if you look back here, it's 5% contingency. So we backed that off and then calculated a 30% upon it. And hopefully, that means we're not using all the funding and we're giving some back. But, you know, there was some projects where we had some cost issues. And so we're trying to be conservative so we can make the town feel confident in what we're doing. But it's our sincere hope that we wouldn't need that. And that means we're giving more money back, you know, at the end of these efforts.
And that's a question that'll likely come up at town meeting as well, and something to be prepared to answer. Because it's demonstrably larger than most. But if there's rationale, as you're stating, as the, you know, behind it, just, you know, just be ready for that one as well. Okay, any other questions?
A follow-up question on the Lundblad Field. I know you're looking for funds to evaluate it for future use. Maintaining it now, Karen, any of the, is the membrane actually showing? Because that needs to be dealt with ASAP before we find ourselves in another situation.
So I had one of the engineers go up and look at it. And I, we believe what people are thinking is membrane is not.
Okay.
But, so we're having like a preliminary real, basically somewhere to give to the Rec to lead them off to what they can do.
Okay. Because they might be forced into closing it, taking it offline.
Right, no, it's not showing.
If the membrane is actually showing.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
So I think what I'm looking for, and I think you confirmed that, is confirmation from the school.
Yeah.
Committee Superintendent, that they're on board with you developing their property to what your future goals are before town meeting.
Yes, I will have that statement.
Okay. Anything further? Chairman Peters, comments from advisory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting with Recreation already. And we will vote on it on Thursday. What I would like to do is share with you some of the, I would say in slang, drift of the meeting we had. In other words, some of the things that came up. I will start with the most important one is, this, we started off with, and I'm speaking on a financial point of view, not judging the fields or the parking on the fields. But we started off at eight-plus percent tax increase when we started this budget process. We're down to, and that was without these extra warrants. We're down to 3.82. And where did that all disappear to? It all went to the deficit of other needs for the residents of this town. I can mention debates here for $30,000 for the senior center for extra, you know, they need a bathroom. That's been a major debate. Library, $380,000. That's been on the cards also for a while, negated. We can go through the rest of it. But the difference between an eight-point, an eight-plus percent tax increase and a 3.82 is because other needs that are also important were taken off the table. And were planned the same as what Recreation is. And it's a difficult process to look at this. One should look at it for all town residents. And then say, where do we put our priorities? We, based on the discussions we had, I have to compliment, so well, she did break it into three, into three articles. This is contentious. I think from a responsibility point of view, we will vote on it on Thursday. But I'm trying to share with you the drift, you know, the atmosphere that I can't share, that I could sense. And I'm sure I'm speaking out of context when I say, this is a, you cannot look at this as, oh, here we are, and Recreation needs this, it's been in the plans. Many other residents have been, and other facilities, I didn't even mention facilities, that were cut back. Serious work that has to be done on buildings in this town. Also, we got buildings that are falling apart. And I think the vote by us on Thursday night may reflect consideration of this. Because if everybody else is deprived and many other projects are being taken back, then we will look at, you know, what has to be done, what could be done next year. You know, the public safety building put a lot of pressure on the budget this year. And, you know, how do we handle this going forward? I do, I can't say that we worked on it. We had the budget for Recreation. I saw probably four months ago already, we asked, and it's many millions over the next couple of years. So I understand that pushing this back will affect the other ones as well. But then we look at facilities and all the other, you know, people use it in library, our buildings, and I'm repeating myself a little bit. But we will consider it in the light of that. And I want to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I think we have one comment from the floor. Ma'am.
Louise Barron, Sadie Hutline. You said what I pretty much want to say. Recreation facilities, your plans sound great. I wish I were younger. I think Kenyans, though, for the marathon, run barefoot. They don't need all this. And are we going to have Olympians for the Beijing 2022 Olympics? This sounds lofty, really lofty. And as a taxpayer, I'm already overburdened. I am just way up to here on the taxes. And I don't use the schools anymore. I don't use Recreation. I don't use the senior center. I don't use any of these things. I live here. But the taxes keep going up. And I'm coming at you from an older person who is going to tell you that you should have come in on this in a smaller scale. I don't even know how much you're asking for. What is it going to cost me personally for all of this? This is enormous. This is for a Brookline, not a Southborough. These kids will be okay if they're, if they don't have pristine fields. You said they were usable, not optimal, usable. Well, what is wrong with that? What is, what's wrong with fixing a couple fields? This is just the biggest thing I've ever heard. I think you have a lot of nerve. I'm not going to agree to something like this. Give me a smaller package to digest. I don't even have numbers. Do you have numbers for us tonight? I'd love some numbers. I need to know what I'm going to get hit at at town meeting.
The numbers, and we'll figure out a way how to publish this, but the numbers were part of the presentation. They're detailed breakdown.
Oh, was it on the screen?
Yeah.
Well, I don't see well. All right. So I don't know what it was.
So, again, for the field repairs, which by the way, not nice to have, I will say that usable is not acceptable. Usable is one step away from unsafe. So.
Oh, they're unsafe?
Usable is one step away from unsafe. I'm not saying they're there yet, but if we do not take corrective action, we could find ourselves in that situation. So, sorry. Article, how do I get there? Thank you. Article 16, which is the De Petri, Calander, and Trotter School Track, which actually is used by a wide variety of citizens, I think, in town, altogether comes to 744,000. Neary Turf Design and Permits, traditionally, you get an estimate for the cost. And most public projects bid 7.5 to 10% for design costs. We went for the 10% of the estimated cost for design, got to $200,000. That gives us a little contingency. We might not use it all. And then the last one, Lundblad Field, again, following the same methodology of 10% of the current estimated project cost, we are going for $75,000.
I'm sorry, how much?
Seventy-five thousand.
Is the study?
The design and permitting and environmental consultant, yes.
Okay. And then we have $30,000 for the senior center, phase one, for something, I don't know what's phase two, three, four, five of the senior center. We have the municipal building, which the taxes are going through the roof.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to deal with that. Then we have the Main Street project. We have solar panels for the offices' cars. That'll come up. I mean, this is, this is like the greatest thing I ever heard. We have more projects than we have people.
Yeah.
Can't do it. I'm sorry. I maxed out. You want to come with, at me, at practical things, but five fields? You've got to be kidding. I just, like I said to begin with, I'm overburdened. All right. I'm just up to here with taxes. I need a break today. We need a moratorium on some of the spending in this town. Because it's astronomically ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I make one?
You may have a one no vote. But yes, please.
Just one brief comment to that, because we've obviously met with advisory, we've met with the board. We understand what's going on financially for the town, but that's not going away for the next several years. We decided that we are the Recreation Commission. We were charged with a set of objectives. We had a plan put in front of us. We were told that there was conditions that were heading towards, you know, a bad state. And that we decided collectively, it was our job to present that to the town in the most conservative way possible, and that we were going to move forward with it, understanding then it's up to the town to decide where their priorities are.
Right. And you've articulated that. You've identified, you know, there may be people who want to break out the article and say they, you know what, I'll vote for one of these, but I won't vote for all of them. People have that option. People have the option of, at town meeting, to reduce it if they want, if they think it could cost less. So, you know, this is your proposal and your article. Ma'am?
I just have a quick question. Betsy Roseman, Five Strawberry Hill Road. You mentioned Trotter Track. I walk Trotter Track frequently. I really don't know what's wrong with it. I never run on it. I don't, could you just elucidate? You said to see the problem, just go down to Trotter. I'm there many times a week from May to October. And I really don't know what the problem would be.
There's drainage issues, signs of wear. If you actually, that's a good point to go to the master plan study where they go into much more detail on that and they have photographs of it.
Does it?
The late, the synthetic latex surface has not been replaced since it originally went in. And that's, you know, if you go to any expert in terms of, and nor has certain care taken place. This is expected maintenance and repairs that we're probably overdue for.
So I'll also add, like, the track, the synthetic is actually coming up. There's holes in it and it's loose. So actually, like, running on it, it's not the way a track should be for performance and for kids.
That's what I was wondering. Is it somehow, just to casually walk on it, and I walk pretty slow, never had a problem.
Right.
Not unsafe. Does it become unsafe somehow for school sports?
So it's more like when you, so when you walk on it and notice like the holes in it and the missing patches and the loose material, that's what we want to be able to take off and replace. So that you'll have another smooth track that will be safer for running and it'll be better.
Is it, is it unsafe in its current condition for the kids?
No, it hasn't been closed. So it's not unsafe. It's just, so what we're doing is we're saying that we don't want to get to a state where we have to close it and we have no option. So now is the time that we feel to invest in fixing it so that it will be able to stay open.
I appreciate the massive, massive amount of work that you've done. And as a citizen volunteer who's been doing her own thing, I really do appreciate your being an advocate for your point of view. It would be helpful, I think, from an advocacy point of view, to let people know how close you are to failure. Just my suggestion. I know failure isn't an option, but how close you are to failure would be something that the average taxpayer might want to know. Because I used the facility and had no idea that there was an issue. And thanks again for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Peters?
Chairman, may I have one more?
Yes, absolutely.
We, I want to address the process here from an advisory point of view. And that is that made an effort, I personally, and we had a look at a capital budget for Recreation. And we actually got figures as well way back. And I mean, it's changed. What is of real concern to us, and I think should be to the town, is that we bypassed the capital planning process here by going through to a warrant article. It places, that means that we don't have the capacity over time to work on this within a capital budget plan where, and I also can refer to what Mark, what Mr. Purple earlier said, you know, when we do capital planning, it's a long-term process. It involves all capital. To have this bypass, basically, the process in To have this bypass basically the process in town that it should, this goes to a warrant article where we look at it at the end, you know, now it's, it's like outside the scope and it's not within context of a capital budget. But de facto, it is. And it's a serious issue. And I really think it should be addressed, that this does not happen again in the future. And that we can have a capital budget plan and that this does not bypass the process where, at the end of the day, we look at this and then we look at this in isolation, which is wrong. And at least as far as I'm concerned. And so I want to raise that point to the Board of Selectmen as well. And it is an appeal to the Recreation Commission as well, that we follow the proper process. It is in the best interest of everybody. And it'll make it smoother and easier to sort it out and agree like we did this year with the other departments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it's great that you're moving down that path because clearly having this as part of the capital plan is going to be so much better for recreation, for our kids, for transparency in our town budget. You know, I'm very supportive of recreation. I don't know where this is going to, I don't know where the vote's going to come out on advisory. I'm not ready to state a position tonight, other than the fact that I'm incredibly supportive of recreation, that we do need to do something. Better had it been in the capital plan and Mr. Schiffern, you know well, and your comments are perfectly stated tonight, you know. Efforts were made a long time ago. We never quite got there. We're here, we need to do some things, clearly. And, you know, but I'm glad that we're, you know, taking a big step forward. I'm confident in that town meeting, you know, will make the right choice. I'm going to be supportive, but I can't, I'm not going to be able to vote tonight. Ma'am.
Dori Anjosinski, I'm on advisory, but I'm asking as a private citizen, as a taxpayer. Actually have a question about Colander Field. In the plan, you state you need irrigation, and is it resurfacing of that field as well? And drainage issues? Are those the three issues on that field?
Colander's a little bit interesting because it has, it has some drainage. And there's evidence, I believe, if you interpret this, of irrigation, but limited, I think they found like one damaged head. So there is money for improvements to both. There's a, it's a very wet area.
Right.
It's downhill from, you know, that, we suspect it's downhill from that community. So that is, that is some of it. It's regrading, it's sodding. Again, I think we summarized some of the main things in the article. And again, in Colander here, you can see, oh gosh, I don't have my glasses. But if you, I gave you a copy of the slides.
Yes, I have.
Slide 15 has that detail there.
Okay. So here's my question. So you have the over 55 community that's above.
Yep.
Above the field, so it's much lower than that. And you've got a very serious runoff drainage coming from that hill. Down the sides, which is washing out the soil. That water is now going onto that field. How is your plan going to correct the overflow, the water coming from down that hill that's actually probably damaging? Have you approached the builder who put that community in to maybe have him help with the cost of trying to fix that? Because how are we going to fix that as a town? I don't know how, that's our responsibility.
And this is where unfortunately Birchwood was going to join us tonight, our Eddie, who would be the person best positioned to answer the question on how they're going to, because I'm not an expert on drainage.
Right. No, I don't want to put you on the spot for that, but.
But he will be there at town meeting or, and also hopefully our public forums and can answer the how much better. In terms of trying to get a history of that field, we, because we had questions on it. It's a, it's a, it's a better field and we want to find some history. We weren't successful in finding somebody who had that information. I don't, also don't know personally if we can conclude with certainty that the drainage issues are because of the retirement community, but it's certainly something we can continue to discuss outside this meeting to see if that is an option.
Well, someone sent me pictures of the water pouring down that side of that mountain. So the water is coming from above. So my question is, is the town responsible to fix that? And because if we don't fix that drainage, we're going to have this problem every year in that field, no matter how much money and time and energy you guys spend to fix it. And I'm not saying I'm against that. I'm saying it's not going to be correctable if we do not fix that water coming down from the top. We just can't, it's just going to keep happening. So, you know, I think that needs to be addressed before we actually do anything on that field. That water has, and I have pictures, I will send them to you. Someone sent them to me today. I was at the grocery store and they emailed them to me. I just got them and I was like, whoa.
If we could get them, that would be great. Now, granted, we just had that nor'easter, which was a bit unusual, but I'm assuming Birchwood took things like that into consideration.
Okay.
They did cite visits, you know, they are experts, Birchwood and Parry, I should say, I'm sorry, in this area. So I think that's a question that we should bring back to them. And we can, again, as we start promoting this more publicly, and we also have the public forums, we can get you a more informed response to that answer.
I will get you those pictures because I was at the grocery store and someone saw me and cornered me in the grocery store and then they sent me all these pictures. So I think that that needs to be addressed first and foremost before we fix anything over there. I think we have to stop that water. So how to do it? Again, I'm not the expert, but you need to be made aware of that. And it's been going on for years.
Yep.
So I, I'm kind of giving you a heads up. That's going to come at you.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate the pictures and we'll pass them on.
I will get them to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Ms. Brock, you.
Just one final comment, please. I think this board, and I think the town historically has always been very receptive and very supportive of recreation. I think the town meeting votes that have taken place over time have shown that. I don't think necessarily anybody asking the tough questions, you know, with the public safety going in, I think there is concern about the budget and the cost. But I don't think any of those questions, I just want to be clear, I don't think any of the questions specifically that I asked tonight are reflective of non-support of recreation. I think it's just questions that people are asking so they can make an informed decision. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vanna.
If you, if you're asked on town meeting floor, I don't, I don't want the answer this evening because I really think you need to think about it. What would be your priority? If motions start to come at town, up at town meeting that we're going to remove something, delete something, and we make a priority list, those of us sitting in the audience and even up here that have to make a final decision? I think you really need to think about what is your number one priority if the question comes up, or even your second priority.
So I'll take your advice and refrain from answering that today.
No, I'm not, I don't think you need to answer that this evening, but that could come up as a question because as it was stated earlier, there are other departments that gave up a lot this year because of a, you know, a building project that we've all agreed to pay for and a golf course that we all agreed that we wanted to bring back to town meeting for support, which we're doing. And this did come in late, and I understand why, and we have all passed that, but it was not in the plan when the initial, the initial discussions took place. So I think you need to sit down and ask yourself, should we leave Colander Field off and use it as it is for a year or Lundblatt or something else? But, and we have a maintenance plan for the fields in the budget this year and the DPW and your budgets, correct? So they will be ma, Karen's shaking her head, yes. So they will be maintained. So just think about it before you get to town meeting. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions? All right, the mood of the board, I, I'm going to be at town meeting on this one. Is anyone ready to make a commitment tonight? All right, I remain supportive, but at town meeting is, that's what I'm hearing?
We're all three.
We're all three. All right, excellent. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, finally, oh, yes.
Kristen, when did you say the date for the forum was, or didn't you say the date?
Oh, no, I did.
I just want to be sure that we let the people know that if they have questions, this is where and when they can go. I think it's.
Yes, that is. Thank you. It will be Monday, March 26, 7:00 PM at the senior center. 9 Cordova Road. We're going to hopefully have some childcare there, too. And we'll also be publishing that tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow, if not the next day, on the Recreation.
Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, finally, we have the CPA projects. Ms. Klesby, welcome. Many of these are fairly routine. I don't know that unless people have specific questions on any, unless you, if you, you can feel free to go over every one of them that you want, but.
20-minute presentation.
Or an hour twenty, whatever. The floor is yours.
The board has already, ma'am, the board's already taken positions on the administrative article and the Burnett, and they've supported both of the, the board has already taken positions on the administrative article and the Burnett article. They've supported both of those.
So Article 23, just for anyone watching at home, is our budget, and you're saying you've already taken a position?
Correct.
Can you let us know what that was?
Yes.
Very supportive.
Thank you. And Article 24, which is our annual required payment for the bond on the Burnett House. I'm assuming you supported that. Okay. So Article 25, I'm going to, I wasn't sure. Kate?
Yes.
This is the old burial ground. And I'll let Kate move up. Ben was here to support me on the budget in case there were questions on that.
Yeah, just if you want a brief overview, I think a lot of these look great to me, but I've.
The brief overview of the Burnett House, I mean, of the old burial ground, I just quickly like to say that this originally came, was brought to us by Karen from the DPW. And they didn't, then she lost staff and couldn't, because it's under their care and control. And this is a very historic burial ground. And as the gravestones lie, you know, on the ground or not upright, they're more susceptible to damage from acid rain. It became a critically time-sensitive to get it fixed as fast as possible. The CPC, nobody was coming forth with a project because no one had staff to look into what it would cost. So we used admin money to do a survey. Kate from the Historical Commission jumped in wonderfully. She worked, she found someone who gave us a great price and did a magnificent job. The work we have just to even start the work that needs to be done, the survey we did, is just, you know, top shelf. And actually, I know that last fall or winter, I got a request from John Wilson from the veterans asking for your request.
So this is a great idea. And I'm glad that it, that it's going forward this year. I contacted Mr. Wilson and he also agreed that this would be a great project. I mean, talk about something historic. The old burial ground is incredibly historic.
1730.
1730s. And, and for anyone who has walked through there, and I have many times, you just can't read many of the, of the stones anymore. And the markers are, contain a ton of history about that individual and about our town. And so it's, it's time, and I'm glad that we're doing this.
And additionally, though, don't expect that you'll be able to read them, maybe a little better, but there's no engraving because it's, you know, you don't refurbish historical markers that way.
Still getting the lichen off will help.
Yes, will all help.
They are documented who's there. I mean, that's another project.
Yes. We have a document, the Historical Society has quite a lot of documentation from the burial ground historically. But yes, it's very, obviously very important. It's time to act.
Yes, and thank you for, and we haven't taken a position on, on the, that one or the, or any of the others yet. All right. I'm going to quickly.
Price for that is $23,000. It's a, you know, kind of a bargain for what we're going to get in.
I would quickly move that we vote to support that. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Thought advisory was here, are they?
No, they've left.
Okay. They're not taking positions tonight anyway on these articles. I know, but I didn't want to have to go back in front of them. Anyhow, okay, so the next one was, where did I lose my?
Library facade.
The library facade. You're all set?
I'm all set. Here are the library people, right behind you.
And you've patiently been here all night. If you have something you'd like to add on this one, I'd love to hear.
This year, they came forth with a study, I mean, with a project for the whole library needing work. Their application, we had conversations in the review, they came back and decided that they'd rather do a study on what really needs to do and responsible spending, I think, is, is that the correct term? It will create a better project for next year that we're anticipating, so.
Sir, welcome.
Hi, Ryan Donovan, Library Director. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Community Preservation Committee for all their work. We went to a lot of meetings, trustee chair, Richard Wallace, and we also have a consultant, Mary Bulso, who we've been working with. I'm just here really to answer any questions you have about the article. You may have none. It's a pretty self-explanatory project, but there's a lot of wear and tear on the historical part of the building that was built in 1911. We're just looking to do some restorative work so that the building will last long term.
All right, questions for our library director? All right, just to comment, some people say that the transfer station is the center of our town or the swap shop. I like to think that our library is a much better, you know, center. You do great work there. The folks that, you know, that work there, that is, the traffic that comes in and out of there, things for every age group, it's outstanding. And so I, I am very supportive of this article. I would move that we support it. Is there a second? All ready to do the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, ma'am, back to you. We're on a roll.
I cried the first time someone called me ma'am. The next one, Article 27.
Madam Chairwoman.
The Halloran Property. This is actually a project that is presented to us actually from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
But I'll give you a little background, that the project came to the CPC as, I believe, our town assessor brought forth to the Open Space Commission and to the Conservation Commission. And the CPC said, well, let's just see if it's feasible, what the dollar amount is. And we used admin monies again to have a appraisal done. And then the price came back, we were surprised at how low. And then from there, that became a point where it was passed on to the Selectmen from, I think, Palcebeli and the Conservation Commission to take it forward for any negotiation and communication with the property owner. The Warren article is for $125,000, which is the purchase price for 30 acres, plus or minus.
A bargain.
Could you repeat?
A bargain.
$125,000?
$125,000, which, given the price of land in town, is very.
No, it just, it just differs from the number that's on the sheet in front of us.
Well, there's an additional 50,000, so for a total of 175. There are costs for purchasing property, particularly because we're using CPA money. And every CPA project for open space requires a conservation restriction. So we worked with out, it's a, I guess we're calling it the best estimate available. There will be, for the conservation restriction, we know there is some cost. There's also potential.
Would that be a co-hold? Would that be co-held?
Another topic.
Well, actually, we're, yes. No, it can't be in this time because additionally, when the town owns open space, it's highly recommended. it's highly recommended, and we just had a mass Audubon study for the planning board on how to handle open space acquisitions for the town. It's always recommended that you put it under the care and control of the Conservation Commission. So in that case, they couldn't co-hold. However, they, that's in the warrant article. The request that the CRB put on the land is in the warrant article, and the money's there, the 50,000 dollars. It's not, and some people don't understand how CPA works. It's not like we give 50,000 to somebody. It's when the costs come through and are identified and the bills are submitted, we pay them. So it's up to, and we never want to shortchange and then at the last minute not have enough. The other issue in the warrant article is to allow the selectmen, the Conservation Commission or a bona fide land trust, apply for a grant. And this came to us very late in our, after our, actually, our application process had closed. So these discussions had not got back to the selectmen, and this might be the first you're hearing about it. But there are several state grants that allow the applicant to receive up to 70% of the acquisition cost. Usually it's around 50%, and we felt it's well worthwhile to at least investigate if that can be done, but not wanting to put any kind of a monkey wrench into this process, given the price of the land. It does require that, the grants that we're talking about, we want to investigate all of them thoroughly. But they do usually require that you apply in the summer, and you can't make any payment until the end, until they're awarded the end of October. So that's asking the property owner if they're willing to wait that long for the state land grants, conservation grants. But this, if you know in our CPA applications, we always require projects to identify if there are any known funding sources besides CPA. We always try to leverage our, our funding, and so that is in there. It allows you to do that. And most of the language was taken right from the Community Preservation Coalition's suggested document. We voted to bond it, and it then went to Town Council and Bond Council, who made some adjustments. And so what you're seeing is basically the intention of our commission, I mean our committee. I will say, just a slight, the committee did not vote on the final language, and we always vote on it, but there's nothing there that is out of line with what we agreed to do. And I worked with Mark Purple and said, I felt, and I checked with one or two members, that it was okay to say this can go to print. I'm just saying that because if the committee voted and said, what were you doing? I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
But that wouldn't happen on the town meeting floor, and we don't want to do that.
I will suggest and move that we support the article. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Just one question. I don't, one of the things that was, that I've heard about this is accessing the land and locations where to access it, you know, if someone from one part of town wants to go walking through the trails, would there be parking set up? Is anything set up for public access to this land?
The answer to that is complicated. So the reason it's at the price it is, is because there's no easy act, there's no road access. There's an easement from Rock Point Road onto the property. It's not clear who the easement benefits. We believe that the town could use it. There is no parking, but there's opportunity, because this property runs almost from where Route 85, just Rock Point Road, and back of Rock Point Road borders the Mass Pike and goes all the way down to Parkerville. It also abuts the town-owned open space parcel that was part of the Hubley Lane subdivision. That parcel of land has road frontage, the parcel goes out to Hubley Lane, so that you can walk up that and get into this property. Depending on what happens with the Rock Point Road, that, I think that needs some investigation. Furthermore, there's, you know, things take time, but there's potential, so there is public access legally from the Hubley Lane. There's also the potential, because of where the Mass Pike comes out to Parkerville, there's a little triangle there. We've looked at maps and said, if we could work with our state rep and senator to work with the Mass Pike to move, there's a fence, and you could maybe have parking there, and then walk in that way. So there's opportunity and options.
And I think the last time this came up, that was a concern I had. You know, it's, it's, you know, some money to be spent on X. If no one knows where it is or no one can enjoy it, we're not getting the full value or full benefit of it. And I, if memory serves, there's a discussion and, and I believe commitments made that as widely advertised as we could, or, and whatever signage that could be placed in and around that area to denote that it is open space available to the public would be ideal. I think there already are some sort of trails or something in some parts of it.
Within the property.
The property has beautiful old carriage roads and stone bridges. It's a beautiful parcel to walk. Additionally, there's a lot of neighbors who live around there who already are using it. So it's not, wouldn't be just for those neighbors, but there is usage. And one thing the Open Space Preservation Commission does, like we just did this last couple of weeks ago with our Winter Wonderland at the golf course, that turned into Fly a Kite, that turned into Come Walk in the Rain. We, and we started doing it at Chestnut Hill Farm. We like to have walks on town-owned open space to bring the citizens' awareness and to let them experience it, so they know to use it on their own.
Yep. Again, not, I'm very supportive of it, but just raising a concern that may be brought up at town meeting about access to the, to the parcel, that's all.
Ms. Brachio.
Just a quick point too. If somebody's actually gonna walk, their intent is to walk it, they can actually park at the Mary Finn School. It is not very far at all to walk from there, so it's just extending their walk a little bit if that's their intent, so.
They're out for a walk?
If that's it, they might as well walk. A thousand steps. Thank you.
I would, I would move that we support. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. The next one is the Golf Course Endowment. This is $50,000 to go towards cost for record, towards the finalization of the conservation restriction. When you have a land trust holding a conservation restriction, there's been much discussion, there is cost associated with that. There's also going to be cost associated with surveys and a baseline documentation. Again, this is above what we think we will have to spend, but we didn't want to, we will only spend the, what is needed, but we don't want to, we know it's gonna be 40-ish thousand anyhow, so.
Would move to support. Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next one is the Golf Course. And this here came from, I believe, a warrant article that the selectmen were looking at. Part of the, or project for the restoration of the golf course after the public safety. The warrant article was going to hit the tax, we started hearing about it because, the CPA, because we heard that things we could fund were on a regular warrant, that we then approached the Golf Course Committee, and, come on up, Andre, that we said, and then, I believe it was Ms. Brachio said, how about the parking lot? We know we could do the holes. So we said we would come in, we invited Andre to the CPC. We were at a stage where our warrant articles were due. We stopped our process, said, will we open it up for this? He came in, created, did a great job in a short period of time of understanding the CPA process. We did provide some help, and, Ben did, thank you. And they came forth with an article, and we, I did some research and found out with some caveat that we could actually fund the parking lot and the retaining wall, which took a lot of money. CPA is not free money. It's not like you're not paying for it, but it doesn't make the residence tax bill go up in the year we spend it. It's already part of your tax bill. So we never treat it as if it's not a taxpayer program. But it does change the dynamics on how people feel about funding a project. So we felt it was a great opportunity to use CPA for something we think the town really voted on doing last year.
And it's not one and done, meaning, so the following year, if other restoration efforts were needed and, and CPC funds were available, they could apply. Again, this is not one and that's it forever. Is that correct?
No, we don't have any restrictions on how many times you can come back.
There you go. I move to support. Is there a second? Any discussion?
We hope that it would be in a timely application, though.
Yes. All right. All right, thank you.
Okay.
One more, I think?
The last one, and I don't know, I think, this one is for $15,000. And it's for the Audubon International Program. And sometimes the least amount of money has the most, least amount of knowledge.
Yes.
So I'm going to, this is a joint proposal from the Golf Course Committee and the Open Space Preservation Commission. And I'll explain how we found it. The Open Space Preservation Commission is working on a native pollinator, native plant initiative. And we've been doing these sort of programming for years. And in my, in my, in my travels of looking into it, I could just find the, so many papers, sorry. Oh, here it is. Okay. I found this thing called Monarch in the Rough. And it's about creating great monarch habitat on golf courses. And I was like, wow, that looks pretty cool. We've got a golf course and we want monarchs. So I looked into it, and it was presented by this group called the Audubon International. And then I looked into that a little further, and someone said, whoa, wait a minute, Freddie, they're not really an Audubon organization. They have the name, but they're really a golf course-driven group. USGA-funded, supported. They're not a membership based like a regular Audubon. So I looked at their Board of Directors, and true to fact, it's like golf course, there's like eight of them, golf course, turf guy, golf course. And the number six was a gentleman from, had been in charge of the, all the National Wildlife Refugees on the East Coast. So I called him up, because a friend gave me his number, and we had a great conversation on what their objectives are. And I've since done more research, but I brought this to the Golf Course CR Committee's work. And during our discussions there, the committee was very favorable about it. It became clear that one of the things in the CR that's required is a management plan in Section 3E. That's not final, the CR, I understand that, but it's very likely, and it's in the current draft, that this is going to be required. And it says, "The management plan is to establish mutually agreed upon best practices, including use and storage of chemicals, including pesticides and herbicides, irrigation, mowing, cutting, other routine maintenance of the premises, management of vegetation and trees, maintenance repair, and construction on the premises, including structures, use of machinery and tools, golf carts, composting and storage of naturally occurring materials, trails, paths, signage, blah, blah, blah."
Any highlights? Okay, thank you.
So, it goes on. The point is, we asked, we had at the meeting, you know, the Conservation Administrator, I mean, Agent is a ex-officio member, Ben is on the Concom, and Krista Collins from SVT was there. And we asked them, and they said they have no idea how to manage a golf course, and that they would have to hire someone. And one of the things the town talked about with having the Conservation Commission be a co-owner is supplying support to them to do the job. And they have said they have no idea what standards to use for this kind of work. And lo and behold, this Audubon International, that's what their program is. They come from it from a golfer's perspective on how, and I was afraid it was greenwashing, but it's not. They come from the golf perspective on how to best manage the property in an environmentally sound way that does not create a hardship for the golf community, and it additionally provides great prestige and marketability and PR. I can see now the Southborough Golf Club, an Audubon International classic course. I've had people get excited about that, that yes, that is something people will want to come to our nine-hole course in Southborough, based on that designation. This project is, they have three programs. This program is for reconstruction, redesign of courses. So we fit that bill. They will come in at the beginning and help with, with suggestions. And you reach a certification only at your own speed, only doing what you want to do. There is no requirement or timeline. And if you don't want to do it after you start, you can unenroll or just take longer to reach the certification, so you don't get that classic, you know, course on your logo. But the point is, they work with the golf management company and the holders of the CR to create exactly what we're going to have to do anyhow. Additionally, they provide materials, a workbook. I've seen it, it's like a book this big. They have best management practices, they have fact sheets, they have resources to help train employees if anything needs to be done differently. And what was the final thing? They, oh, 90, I think it was 92% or 98% of the courses enrolled have said there's no additional cost to them, and I think it was 42% said they actually end up saving money.
What, the management company, you've spoken with them, Andre, and, and they're?
I have an email I think I sent to you from Bill.
They're supportive.
Yeah. And that was, the main concern I had was, and you've, I think you've clarified all of it, was really what, you know, could there be limitations imposed upon the town to have to do this? If you start it, or if you apply for it, you are limited to do X, Y, and Z. You can only use these kinds of fertilizers. You can only use this amount of, or whatever it might be, where it could get to the point where you've limited yourself so much that for this kind of designation, you can't run a profitable golf course, and suddenly golf itself is in jeopardy. What you're saying is the exact opposite. It's not restrictive at all. It's something that is, if you, if the town wants to do it, it can do it. Shouldn't be any additional cost to the town. It could be a benefit to the town. And if the town decided to walk away at some point from it and said, this isn't working for us, that's okay too.
Yes, but there is a cost to doing it. I mean, there's an enrollment fee. And why we put this package together is one of the main things we wanted to do was to make sure that the management company were aware they're working in very difficult situation of a construction zone, trying to keep members there. There would be no additional cost to them, no, to alleviate as much of any additional workload for them, because we're going to fund it and have, hire a consultant.
And what, do you have an estimate as to what the total cost to the town could be if we completed the whole?
When you're done?
Project and got the certification? Yes.
Well, it's ongoing. So you pay, I think it's $400 a year. There's some.
You're not talking about $400,000 a year. You're talking this fairly small amount.
We figured the 15,000 would last us three years. You know, we know that the management company, I think, has two years.
And you could come back in additional years and ask, is CPA money available? No, at that point, it comes out of the taxpayer.
This is a certification for the golf course, because we can't pay ongoing maintenance. And I thought after three years, the construction's done, we hopefully have it certified.
Okay.
Then it's, but hopefully the golf course will be so wonderful as an Audubon International classic course that we'll be making enough money.
Monarchs, you know, I mean.
Well, I did say, I did say people would be bird watching.
I'm sensing some support. All right. I would move to support. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
I'd like to thank all of you. I know the amount of time you've spent at this and coordinating it between the committees, and I certainly appreciate it, and I'm sure my colleagues do.
Thank you.
As well, Freddie, I would just like to say, I know to get the parking lot and the retaining wall included, I know you spent an awful amount of time on that, so I thank you, and the board thanks you as well.
I'd like to thank all the applicants as well, which includes the Board of Selectmen. The Golf Course Committee has been awesome. The Historical Commission.
They have. Good partnership.
The Library.
Thank you.
Conservation.
Chairman's report.
Chairman's report, none at this time. Towne Ministries' report?
I have nothing at this time.
Consent agenda, I will, well, I'm gonna move that to approve one through four. And if there's a second, I'll read them.
Second.
All right. So approve the meeting minutes, February 22, 2018. Appoint Carrie Trippi to Southborough Cultural Arts Council. Appoint Diane Cozile to the Southborough Scholarship Advisory Committee and assigning of the warrant for April 9, 2018, town meeting. All in favor?
Uh, just one question.
Oh, yeah.
Having added the article, can we sign the warrant?
Yes, you can sign the warrant. You've directed council to, to prepare the article. And quite honestly, if you, if you take a look at the language in Article 33, so essentially it says, "To see if the town will vote to amend the provisions of Southborough Code, Chapter 41, entitled Town Meeting, Section 4118 thereof, by striking the section in its entirety and inserting in place thereof." If you end the sentence after striking the section in its entirety.
Mm-hmm, you're done.
Or do or act anything in relation there to, you're essentially done.
Yep.
Which is what I sent Aldo, and hopefully saved us some time.
Yep.
So I really think that that is the, the intent, that that's really the essence of the article.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I in particular, I'd like to thank Carrie Trippi and Diane Cozile for volunteering for their town. Very much appreciated. Public comment? Alright, seen none, I will make a motion to adjourn, is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.